And come up and hopefully answer a few questions for us that we had from our last meeting. Mr. Levine.
I'm sorry.
Ty Richards, Larry Levine.
Hi, nice to meet you.
All right, at our last meeting, we asked some questions about A and R. I think I'll have to mention requirements, we met the requirements for what met questions we had with access, I believe is one of the questions. Or retaining walls, because I believe part of the A and R process is to describe both those on the property.
The, um, we have made provisions on the plan you see before you. The retaining walls are not affected or effective on the non-sub lots up here. There are some slightly way back here.
Okay.
But then, we didn't see the importance of having them because it really didn't affect the proposed non-sub plan here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Certainly.
I've actually had the pleasure of actually, years and years ago, working at this job. And on the upper driveway, there's a retaining wall across the entire front of what will be the remaining lot, all along the driveway. Um, the wall's about three foot, three and a half foot in height, and that's what we were concerned about.
Tell me your concern.
Well, as you come in the driveway, there was a retaining wall across the entire thing.
Are you talking on Prospect Street?
On Prospect Street. Now, one of my concerns is just that part of our requirements require that a plan show fences, walls, um, proposed easements, easements.
Okay.
And again, they don't show on. In my instance, all I'm asking for is to show what's required of the subdivision walls and regulations.
All right, with, with your indulgence, we can revise this plan that you see and put that retaining wall along Prospect Street.
If I may, the other thing I noticed, by looking the other day, it also requires setbacks. You have side yard setbacks, but there's no frontage setbacks. I'd like those included on it. Like I said, I mean, we have a simple list of 12 things, and it seems like each time we get a new plan, there seems to be less and less. And I'm not saying it's anything, you know, with your client or anything, I just, I'd like to see complete plans, especially when they're being filed.
I understand. We didn't do that because these structures have been in existence for many years. And in fact, showing the setbacks might be somewhat misleading, because as you know, we used, when these were constructed, they didn't have to, um, have the dimensional setbacks required in the zone, because there are houses here that are closer, and so we were able to use the averaging.
The averaging.
Yes, correct. We can put those in. I mean, that's the reason, because we thought that would be misleading if we put it in, and, and the board may come under scrutiny, even though in a non-sub plan, not an issue technically.
Exactly.
But we can put those in.
Yeah, I think I'd rather have that than somebody say, why is it so close and where's the numbers? It's a lot easier to explain the real reason rather than somebody go, why is that not there?
Okay. Just so you understand, that doesn't mean, I think in that zone, it's 50-foot setback.
I think so.
And you can find 50.
Right. Yeah, because I think topography doesn't really help that situation, because it drops off substantially quickly.
No, with, with the driveway, um, obviously from the looks of it, it cuts across. Is there going to be an easement issued, so that that driveway can be continued to be used?
I'm glad you asked.
Well, my next question to the board is, can we grant an easement? Because then that will become a common driveway for two separate lots. I don't know if the town allows common driveways, and it's...
I don't know if that falls under our purview, first and foremost.
Let me answer the question this way. Sandra May Vary owns this parcel.
Yep.
She owns this parcel. She owns them both in fee simple, which means she has total ownership.
Right.
As long as she owns both budding lots, there's no reason to create the easement. I've advised her already, one day when we convey, if she conveys one of the lots, it would be at that time that an easement would be created. It would be created if she wanted to retain the use of the driveway to protect her as well as the new owner. But since it's now in fee ownership and she, it's a merger concept, there's absolutely no need to have an easement created at this point.
Here would be the accessibility from Prospect Street in the retaining lot.
Same way.
So there would be no accessibility from the new frontage that's created.
Well, there is now. There is now. Do you see this?
Actually, that's from the adjacent lot that's being created. That's...
That's correct.
So what you're, you're basically proposing is this frontage of 140.53 feet.
Yep.
Which would be the remaining.
Yep.
Has frontage, well, the only accessible area would be on the side lot then.
No problem.
If that retaining wall comes all the way across.
No problem. She still has the legal right, because she owns both parcels. And there's no reason and no necessity to create an easement at this point. Also, 215 Prospect Street. At one time, the driveway was directly from Prospect. All right? This was created because of the slope there. Okay? So, to answer the question, they will continue to use the driveway as it's shown. There's no reason to create, because she owns both parcels, to create the easement. If she were to convey that, this parcel, or this parcel, at that point, we would advise her to create an easement and have an agreement regarding maintenance, insurance, et cetera. But, um, the, to answer the question, being a lawyer for a second, there is no easement in being right now.
Right.
Okay? There's no necessity to the non-sub approval process to create one.
Right.
If there was an easement, we would show it to you. Okay? But she owns everything. She could put a driveway back here if she wanted, without creating a document.
My concern is when you take two lots under an A and R, the requirement under A and R is frontage and accessibility to a buildable portion of the lot.
No, it's not. Frontage on a public way, that's it.
And the court actually, in court cases, has held that it has to be accessible to the buildable portion of the lot.
It is accessible.
That's part of my concern, is that...
It's accessible right now, it'll be accessible tomorrow.
When the plan doesn't show everything, it's very difficult to know if it is or not.
And you ought to ask her attorney. What I'm telling you, I'm sure that he will repeat. Your concern is if this was going to be sold, and we would have the same concern, and at that point, it would be created. But, but this is, this driveway is your access.
It's basically like saying on a subdivision, you can create lots and not have to worry about putting a road in. They have the frontage, but what happens when the frontage is on a highway, which is not accessible, but yet, such as in the case in Nantucket, where they wanted to do a common driveway, or such as the case where, even though there was frontage, there was a zoning bylaw that stated that you could not put a driveway within 1,000 feet of another driveway. And with that, basically what ended up happening is even though they had the frontage, it was unusable frontage, they couldn't get to the buildable portion of the lot from that frontage. So the court in that case, from what I can tell, said that they did not have access to it, and the A and R wasn't applicable. I mean, I made, like I said, I'm just going...
First of all, you have a statement here, that you weren't saying it meets zoning requirements, okay? Two, the existing building that's on the lot being created, on the northeast side, is going to be converted to a single-family residence.
I did see that on the new plans.
I think for tonight's sake, I mean, because there are a couple of issues, I don't think we can approve it, but I think that would give us time to check with our attorney, to ask him. I think it's a very simple question.
That's fine. I don't, I, I understand the, your questions, but under this process, your questions are somewhat irrelevant. You may have requirements within your regulations to show any easements in stone walls, but your approval or non-approval of a sub, a non-sub plan is not based on the accessibility issue, because it's frontage on a public way. And it has already in existence, the driveway. I'll leave you with that.
All right. Anybody else want to add anything?
No, I think we've got time to do a little research on this, and, yeah, go ahead. We have time to do some research on this, and I, I need to refresh my memory on my A and R training, to make sure that I've got the right wording, I don't have that pile with me tonight.
As far as the setbacks on the walls, you're, that's not going to be an issue for you, as far as your, your client goes, right? Do we need a motion to continue?
I would suggest that you request an extension, an agreeable extension for you to make your decision, so you don't have to...
Agreed.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, or can I get a motion to extend the A and R process till next Tuesday? Or, I'm sorry, two weeks from today?
So hold.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. Do you want the revised plan before?
Yes, please. Yes, that way if there's anything missing, we can...
Yep.
All right, and we, if we have to show the town attorney, we'll be back then. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Nice to meet you.
Larry, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hey.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, next up, we have a special permit and site plan review for a gas station and convenience store on the corners of Chestnut Street and Shaker Road. Um, the applicants here would like to step up and give us a presentation, and we're going to ask some questions amongst the board, get it up to the public, and then we'll bring it back to the board for final comments and/or questions.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can I have you guys have your name and addresses, please, for the record?
Legal minutes first.
Let me get...
Legal minutes?
Yeah, I want to get the name and address for the record, or you want to do the minutes first?
Right.
All right, we got a couple of things to read into record. And I'm going to ask everybody to speak loudly and clearly, so we can, the mics can pick it up for the folks on.
I guess that's me.
That is you, sir.
East Long Metal Planning Board Public Hearing. The East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 11th, 2014, at 6 o'clock, in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 60 Center Square, East Long Metal, Massachusetts, for a special permit and site plan review submitted by Chalmers Enterprises LLC. Proposed project is for the construction of a gasoline station with convenience store located at 275 Chestnut Street and 227 Shaker Road. The East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing. Save yourselves a few minutes. Um, site title, untitled. Site location, 275 Chestnut Street. Applicant is Chalmers Enterprises LLC, one modern place, Springfield, Mass., 01144. Owner is Chalmers Enterprises LLC, same address. Security system, exterior lighting, yes, interior lighting, yes, alarms, yes, recommendations, yes. Exterior lighting should be installed to minimize the impact of surrounding residential properties. Signage, yes. Any signs should be installed so they do not impact the visibility of vehicular operators entering and exiting the site. Consideration should be given to, on any signs' impact on visibility at the intersection. Traffic impact, traffic study, a traffic study was submitted with this application. Location of entrance/exit, Shaker Road on West Side at address and Chestnut Street on North Side at address. Traffic volume increase, yes. The submitted traffic study indicates an estimated of 1,950 trips entering and exiting the site on a weekday basis. Traffic control changes, yes. The site plan indicates only one curb cut on each of the streets will be left open. A review of the location indicates sufficient distance from the actual intersection on Shaker Road for the proposed driveway to function without any significant problems. However, the proposed driveway located on Chestnut Street is located too close to the intersection to allow existing vehicles an opportunity to safely enter traffic flow. The driveway connections with Chestnut Street, approximately one vehicle length back from the stop line. A potential exits for vehicular traffic to utilize the driveways at the site to circumvent traffic stop for the traffic light to access westbound flow on Chestnut Street from Shaker Road. The proposed sidewalk connection to the bike path should be connected at a point back from the roadway and behind the island with a Ballard. Center lines for both driveways and arrows on pavement to indicate lanes for entering and exiting the site. Parking spaces along the north side are indicated in traffic study, but none are on the site plan. Police service impact, it is estimated there will be an increase in police response due to this project. Additional recommendations and comments, any plantings should be located so as not to interfere with vehicular operators' visibility entering and exiting the site. Additional consideration should be given to visibility at the intersections. This too? And that's, we're all set with that? Or you want to read that?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, East Long Metal Planning Board, Robin McDonald, Director of Planning and Zoning and Conservation. Dear Planning Board members, we are writing to you, the East Long Metal Planning Board, to ask for your support for the purpose, proposed new gas station, convenience store to be located at the corner of Chestnut Street and Shaker Road. We are unable to attend the meeting on Tuesday night, March 11th, as we are both out of town. L.E. Belcher is a well-respected company that operates first-class stores in the greater Springfield area. As residents of East Long Metal for the past 30 years, we feel the added taxes and the convenience of having a station at the intersection is long overdue. Thank you for taking the time to consider our support for this project. We believe it will benefit the community in the long run. Regards, Michael and Grace McCarthy, 73, Prospect Hills Drive, East Long Metal. Memo to Planning Board, Memo to Robin McDonald, Director of Planning and Zoning, from Frank Moriarty, Assistant Town Engineer, regarding Chalmers Enterprises LLC. As a result of the roundtable meeting held on February 26, 2014, the following plan changes have been made in response to the Department of Public Works' concerns. The curb circles at the entrance and exits are now shown to be granite radii. The sidewalk along Chestnut Street has been extended to the rail trail. Notes have been added to the plan to maintain the existing concrete bounds. The access, egress driveway on Chestnut Street has been shifted approximately 15 feet westerly away from the intersection, however, concerns regarding safety and traffic flows remain. Painted stop bars and center line striping have been shown on the plan. An asphalt lip has been added to the Shaker Road driveway to deter water from entering the site. A grade change was designed at the Chestnut Street driveway to defer, deter surface water from the site onto Chestnut Street. A catch basin was added to this location. This department requested onsite soil testing to confirm design and assumptions regarding the drainage system. The system was designed without soil evaluation. We cannot approve the drainage design without those logs. Traffic study, please refer to the memo attached from Robert Parent, P.E., to Mrs. Robert McDonald, Director of Planning and, Planning, in the Planning Board dated March 10th, 2014. If you have any questions, feel free to contact this office. And attached is a letter. Robin, I, uh, this is to Robin. Robin, I have, I had the opportunity to complete preliminary review of the Alfred Benson traffic study received late in the day on Friday, March 7th, as we all personally observed traffic at the intersection during the PM peak period during that evening. As discussed at our roundtable meeting this morning, I believe the study is lacking in a number of areas and requires updating before acceptance to the Planning Board. The study contains no discussion of the negative impacts that the development would have on safety in the area of the intersection, and most critically, the existing bike path. The study should also consider the impacts of vehicle traffic from La Florentino, which is located directly across the street from the proposed development, and Lennox Saw, which is located just beyond the proposed development, across the bike path. The study only considers the impact of the development on the intersection capacity and level of service, which is only part of our concerns regarding the project. There is no question that the development will increase the potential for vehicle-to-vehicle and vehicle-to-pedestrian collisions in the area, and the application should be required to evaluate these impacts and propose reasonable mitigation measures. Based on a review of the I.T.E. trip generation criteria, the study underestimates the impact of the development on the function of the existing intersection. The study uses the least conservative of the two applicable I.T.E. trip generation criteria for convenience store gasoline station projects. Use of the more conservative criteria appears to be most applicable to this, to the proposed project, since the planned co-branding use of the building will make the convenience store a standalone vehicle destination, instead of just a accessory to the gas station. The updated traffic study incorrectly states the convenience store size to be 2,320 square feet. Probably a typographical error from the previous study, which reported the size at 4,230 square feet. The plan submitted to the town indicates the first floor of the building will be 4,000 square feet, with a basement of unspecified, unspecified size. The applicant should confirm the proposed square footage of the basement and add this to the first floor value to provide a total proposed building square footage value. Trip generation rates should be based on the total square footage unless the applicant can conclusively demonstrate that a portion of the basement's square footage is not used to support the first floor area in the same manner, manner that the storage space will typically be counted in the total square footage of a single store, story, convenience store. Personal, personal observations on the evening of March 7th suggests the northern Shaker Road approach to the intersection functions at a level of Service D, not C, as calculated in the updated study. The query length on a typical Friday PM peak was in excess of 800 feet and took multiple light cycles to clear. This downgrade to the Shaker Road approach LOS combined in the LOS D calculated by the applicant for the Chestnut Street Eastern approach may result in an overall downgrade of the intersection LOS 2D during PM peak. The impacts of the proposed development will likely increase as a result of the change, excuse me, change in the LOS, as well as an increase in tip, trip generation rates discussed above. Also the discussed, also as discussed, the Planning Board should keep in mind that the use of the average daily traffic ADT data, as is commonly in studies of this type, will result in traffic volumes that are greater than estimated during many peak periods and volumes less than estimated during other periods. Lastly, I understand there is an applicant, that the applicant engineer for the updated study was unavailable to visit the intersection during peak vehicle periods. I recommend that the site be visited by engineer at a similar time as did so my observations to be confirmed. Please let me know if you have any questions. Bob Parent, P.E., Superintendent of Public Works, Town Engineer. Nothing else to read? Thank you very much.
All right, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name's James Martin. I'm a lawyer with the law firm Robinson Donovan, with offices at 1,500 Main Street in Springfield. And I represent Chalmers, one of the, the applicant here tonight. Chalmers is a real estate holding entity that is owned by the Davis family. The Davis family is, I think, well-known to most of you here in East Long Metal, former owners of American Saw and developers of Greatwoods, and initially, the permitting owners of the fields at Chestnut. We have a group of people here tonight that I'd like to introduce you to, the Davis family's represented by Drew Davis here, and I'm their attorney. We have our two engineers here, Mark Smith. Mark is very experienced in terms of designing gas stations throughout New England. He's with the Benesh Company. And then we have Steve Alman. Steve Alman is a certified traffic engineer. And Steve, as you'll hear through our narrative, was brought into this process to do the studies that the town requested during the various roundtables and discussions. Um, you know, the Davis family's owned this parcel for a long time. People know, remember, it's been vacant since Mr. Davis Jim tore down Country Corners quite some time ago. And for a long time, as they've looked at what to do with that property, they've been looking for what they thought was a good use for themselves, for the town, and balancing that with the right partner. And they reached a conclusion that this, there was a need for a service station and a convenience store, this location in towns, and they sought out a partner to develop this, because they're not gas station operators. And they were pleased to find the L.E. Belcher Company. They are a local company. They are here, represented tonight by Ed Huff, the president, right here. And they have David Ryan. David's right there. And I know we also have Nate. There's Nate, Nate Dale, right there, and they're represented by Jim Shields, their counsel. And Davis family chose them in large part because they know Mr. Huff, they know Mr. Ryan, they've known him for years. They're a local company, they knew their, their high integrity, they own a dozen gas stations in the area, they've built them all, they operate them all, and they felt that they, you know, would be a fine operator, because, you know, it's a legacy for them too, to have something that they can be proud of. So, we then, you know, moved forward with this project, hired Mark to do a design for the station, and we brought it to the town informally, met with Frank and Robin, and got some excellent feedback back in, I think it was November or December. Mark revised the plans, and then we set about filing the plans for site design review, and we had a lively roundtable the first time around, and got excellent feedback. You know, it's a great thing that the town has this system, because it, you know, lets you vet a lot of things before, bless you, before you, you know, get to the public hearing. And so we vetted a lot of things and got a lot of feedback, and a lot of the things you heard about from Mr. Morandi's report were done. Some change in the granite curbs, some flow issues, and, you know, some back, pack lighting, moving the handicap space. I, I think we've gone through the initial list, and every change was made to the plans at that time, that were requested by the town. The issue remained traffic, and at that first roundtable, we had submitted a traffic study by a company out in Westfield that has done traffic studies for various projects here in Westfield. Superintendent asked for a traffic engineer analysis, not just a count. Fair enough?
If I may interrupt you, the Pratt Pass Superintendent, or the new one?
Current, current, this is, this roundtable occurred in January, after the change to Bob. Bob is, Bob was president.
I want to clarify that.
Yes. The initial meetings were with the old administration, the roundtable meetings were with the new administration.
Okay.
And so he asked for certain specific studies, and, and to be done by a certified, qualified engineer. So, Steve was hired, Steve works at Benesh as well, they are a full-service engineering company, and Steve did his analysis. And we've submitted that to the town, it's a very detailed analysis. We had Steve specifically do every test and analysis that Mr. Parent asked for, including intersectional analysis. Fortunately, he had the software and was able to work under high time pressure to get it out. And I won't, you know, pretend to present the report to him, he will. But, you know, when you boil it all down, the data supported the analysis and the design that we had laid out initially. Keeping in mind that we have already closed two curb cuts in this analysis, keeping in mind that some of the changes that were requested, such as the driveway on the chest that was moved back, keeping in mind that, you know, we were going to extend the sidewalk for the town from the bike path, so people wouldn't come to the bike path and go out in the road and come into the driveway if they wanted to get a bottle of water or Gatorade or use the restroom or whatever. So, all of those, what, uh, design changes were made, and, and including, you know, the flow changes and that sort of thing, that were, you know, substantive for the DPW. And so, with this traffic study, you know, because we were told at the roundtable, I need to see it. Empirical data is what counts. You know, what the traffic level is, what the impact is on the site, et cetera. And, you know, Steve's analysis covered all of that. And, you know, to be quite frank, you know, it, it has a lot of positives to it, the design. And it's, you know, I should say, right at the outset, the Davis family, the Huff family, we want the safest possible operation. You know, it's not going to do, we need to do it for the citizens of East Long Metal, we need to do it for customers, we need to do it, you know, for the employees, we need to be... to be for the people who are going to be delivering goods, the people who are going to be supplying, you know, delivering the oil from delivering the bottles of water. We want this to be a very safe site. So we're not, you know, we're very kind, that's a number one priority. For instance, you'll hear tonight that, you know, L E Belcher has two employees at all times in their store all the time. They never leave one employee alone for the safety of their employees and for the service to the public. So that's paramount. And so as we went through and tried to look at essentially, you know, every change that was requested, if it worked for improving safety, we did it. And you'll hear tonight that I think every change has been made thoughtfully in terms of, you know, how the flow of traffic will be internally, which is important for safety. Many of the accidents occur, you know, in retail establishments, whether it's shopping malls or strip malls, internally, if you don't have proper flow. We made all the changes that the police department requested in terms of having dividing lines in between, you know, coming in and out, ballards where they wanted them, things like that. Frankly, what really after the second roundtable, we presented, Steve presented his analysis, and the data supported the flow as this, as he will explain to you. And, you know, one issue became, you know, would you restrict traffic onto Chestnut Street turning right? And there seemed to be some support for that by the engineer. Steve's analysis and the further studies that you heard asked for in the minutes, which he has now done, indicate that that is not the safest way to go. And he will explain that to you as he goes through. So when you get to the actual review of the process, you'll see from Mark how we've laid out the store, and the one thing was correct, they had a transposition of the numbers. It isn't a 4,000 square foot building. It is, just has a storage basement, there's no operation going on there. It has five fueling stations, 10 pumps, and we've been through the Conservation Commission. We got an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, so we've been through that process and received their approval. We've done, taken, you know, the best measures we can to give certainly as much barrier and, you know, protection to the neighbor to the north on that side, as you can see from the green space, that's going to be there, that the landscaping around the front is not going to obstruct. In fact, this, you know, the development of this site will actually clear that, all the sightlines of that traffic, even though there will be a building there, but the building will be set back. But, you know, the elevation will be brought up, it'll be flattened, and it'll be lower. That ground cover is decorative landscaping, it's not going to hinder visibility at all. And, and so, you know, we feel that we have tried to do the best we can to address all of the issues and make this a very safe and user-friendly operation. We've gotten great feedback from the community that this is a resource that is welcome in this area of the town. We also get, we believe, and the town gets the, and Steve will address, is the added benefit of, you know, people who are coming through, particularly from the south, through East Lawn Meadow, going to the Rotary to get gas or going further, this will somewhat dampen or lessen that traffic, I think, what do you call bypass traffic, Steve? So we'll get the benefit of that as well. And Steve will give you all his analysis as to why the restriction on right turn is not safe, or is not as safe as what he has proposed. And I'll let him scientifically describe that, and then we can wrap it up in a summary there. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Mark to give you the general layout, and then Steve will present the traffic analysis. Any questions for you before we start?
Okay. My name's Mark Smith, with Alfred Benesh and Company at 90 National Drive, Glastonbury, Connecticut. And, you know, just, it's easier for me, I think, to point to the board, so I think that's okay, Robin, as long as I speak loudly enough. Okay. You're probably familiar with this site, most of you. This is where the bike trail is. So currently, it's just a formally developed, but currently undeveloped site. We do have access to all the utilities, gas, water, sanitary sewer. Drainage right now drains to the northwest corner towards that wetlands that was mentioned. The proposed site development is a 4,500 square foot convenience store. We anticipate half of that being a basement. And as mentioned, the basement is strictly for storage, it's sort of a quality of life thing. If we did not have a basement, it really wouldn't change the convenience store layout on the first floor tremendously. You might be, have to take a little more space up top for, for storage and utilities. But in reality, it just, it makes a much more comfortable situation for the operator. As Jim mentioned, we've got five gasoline dispensers. Some people get confused, it's five individual pump islands with two fueling positions on each island for a total of 10. So the way we're laying out the site is there's currently four curb cuts, two on Chestnut and two on Shaker Road. We're taking the Shaker Road curb cut and moving it as far as practical from the intersection, you know, being mindful of some residential further, further along to the north. We've been trying to optimize the Chestnut curb cut, mindful of the proximity to the intersection with Shaker, but also very mindful of the bike trail. So we feel that this is at an appropriate location for that curb cut. It lets us get into the site and, you know, access this nice drive aisle we have for both the fueling dispensers and the parking area, and still get into our, the small parking area we've created right here. There was mention of the sidewalk connection, this walk connection to the bike trail, and as came from roundtable, we show it connecting all the way to the, all the way to the bike trail. We've been able to maintain a nice perimeter landscaping. We've got a great buffer here, 70 to 80 feet at the narrowest point on the north side, nice landscape island in front. The site's large enough, 1.8 acres, so we were able to meet all the zoning requirements for setback, lock coverage, without any difficulty. So it conforms very well with the East Lawn Meadow regulations. So we have the, you know, the planting that will meet, you know, all the regulations. We have some trees, but in keeping with the idea of not blocking any sightlines, these are mostly lower shrubs and ornamental grasses in the islands. Nothing at the intersection such as a sign is going to block sightlines. We have to meet the setback for the sign, so the setback is actually in this planting area, or the sign is actually in this planting area here. So that's not in danger of obstructing the intersection in any way. We've arranged it so that all deliveries and trash pickup, et cetera, can happen over in this corner of the site, out of the main traffic pattern. One thing we like about this layout is it lets the tanker come in, and tankers generally speaking, deliver off the right-hand side. And so by doing this, the tanker can come in, he can, he's not going to block traffic, and he can deliver off the right-hand side. So the whole delivery operation is going to happen outside the traffic pattern. You'll have the tanker here, the hoses, the delivery driver, et cetera, they'll be isolated from, you know, from the on-site traffic, which I think is a good thing.
And that's safe for the driver too. And Belcher uses United here in East Lawn Meadow, so they're right down the road, so we've consulted them on that.
What is that dimension?
Which dimension?
From the corner of the building to what's shown as asphalt, where the tanker trucks are going to be parked?
From the corner to here?
The forwardmost building, where the pump station is, I'm sorry.
Oh, here?
Yes.
To here?
Roughly there to the paved end of the asphalt going north, or northeast, if you will.
Okay, this way here?
Yes, that dimension.
Yeah, it's about 45 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess the idea would be the tanker can be in there, you can still have a 24-foot, yeah, driveline.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. This is actually a really nice site. We often have to work with much, much tighter sites, and so we've got real generous circulation around the islands. You know, people have fills in different sides of their vehicles, et cetera. The other thing with a site like this, it was kind of long this way, a little narrower this way. So the dispensers are arranged in what's called a dive island situation where, you know, you're orientated this way when you're, when you're fueling. But the idea is any driver can access any available fueling position. They don't have to wait for anybody to move out of the way. Nobody has to back up to leave if someone is fueling in front of them and they're not done yet. So it's really pretty much an ideal situation. As far as stormwater management goes, we've maintained the existing drainage patterns. Everything drains to the northwest. So in keeping with the, you know, mass DEP stormwater requirements, we've done all our treatment and all our recharge. We take a small piece of the parking lot over here, which we couldn't, couldn't work in this direction, we put in a stormwater treatment unit just for that, and we took some of the roof runoff, and we're going to recharge it over here in underground galleys. The vast majority of the site is going to be directed, anything that's paved is going to be captured in catch basins and run through a treatment unit. Roof runoff, clean runoff, we will pipe directly to the detention area. It's really a retention area because the only calculated outflow would be for a 100-year storm event, and these calculations are generally fairly conservative. So we expect, based on the soil conditions, it was mentioned, given time of year, et cetera, we didn't go out and do soil testing, but we had spoken with the previous town engineer, reviewed the soil mapping, and observed it in major rainfall events. And we're very confident that when we do do the pits, it's just going to confirm we have nice Type A soils. But we've done a very conservative design, and after the stormwater travels through the catch basins and the treatment unit, we have an isolated floor bay for additional settling before it would even go into the main part of the basin. And as I mentioned, we expect it all to recharge, but we do have a 100-year overflow. Yeah, I guess at that, I'll just, we do have a concept for the building. I can't say I'm entirely happy with the ink, but so, I don't, we're actually, probably, this yellow is maybe a little, little more yellow. At this point, the applicant is not certain what fuel brand it would be. L E Belcher does brand themselves, depending on the location, situation, it's Sitco, Shell, Irving, or Gulf. So we could finalize this image, you know, once, once we know the branding, but the idea is that it'll be, you know, a pitch roof, clambered type structure with this, you know, a gable entrance feature. And, you know, I will say from the, from the beginning, when Drew Davis contacted me, the goal was always to make this a very nice neighborhood type station, and so that's what we're trying to create here. I guess the only other thing I'll, I'll mention is we have left room for, for some outdoor seating, basically a patio, which we think would be a nice feature. We have plenty of room to do it, and so we proposed some seating areas here, and I imagine that's something that some of the bike trail folks might take advantage of.
Mark, could you comment on the lighting, please, for?
Yeah, it's, you know, you have a photometric plan in the package. We kept the perimeter lighting to a minimum. Where we really want the lighting is underneath the canopy. But in any event, it's all LED lighting, that, all filling stations are going to LED lighting. The beauty of it is you can direct the light where you want, so we can minimize any spillage offsite. And if you look at the photometric plan we provided, you'll see extremely low lighting levels around the perimeter. And the canopy lights are flush mounted to the canopy deck. They're not the old style where the lenses drop down and you could basically see the, see the lighting element. So it's benefit to everybody. It's an energy savings, and it's much more neighborhood friendly than the older style.
And the fire suppression system?
Yeah, well, as part of this self-serve filling station, and this will be actually formally approved through the state fire marshal, they will have to have a dry chemical fire suppression system. That'll be installed by a licensed installer. It'll be, you know, reviewed by the local fire marshal. The ultimate approval comes from the state fire marshal. And as was mentioned, L E Belcher operates always with two. And the idea that, in addition to just general safety, is it lets your attendant attend the fueling operation and not, not be distracted by things going on in the store. It's the best way to operate one of these facilities.
Okay. Is that it for now?
That's it for me, I guess.
Any questions, Mark, before we go to the traffic?
I've got a few, but I think I'm going to wait till I hear the gentleman.
We'll let you give it all.
I've got a lot of questions, hopefully you can answer them as we move forward.
My name's Steve Alman. I'm a licensed traffic engineer in the state of Massachusetts. I work with, for Alfred Benesh and Company of 90 National Drive, Glastonbury, Connecticut. As Attorney Martin had stated, I was brought on board about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, to update the study that was done by someone else. There were some inconsistencies between the original study done back in September and what actually ended up on, on the table. The number of driveways was reduced from four to two. The number of fueling stations was reduced from 12 to 10, so it needed to be redone. In order to calculate the impact of the development on the roadway network, we use the I T E trip generation manual for trip generation rates. The rate I picked was land use 945. I'll go into this in more detail when I'm done with this study. 945 is a gasoline service station with convenience market. That land use is for a facility that is predominantly gasoline, where the convenience mark is a secondary. When I get done doing this first report, I'll go into that a little bit further. But that's what I use for this. Based on a 10-position fueling facility, ADT is 1628. AM peak hour traffic, total traffic is 106, roughly 50% in, 50% out, so it's 53 entering, 53 exiting. The PM peak hour is 135, 68 entering, 68 exiting. The original study done for, for this facility assumed pass-by trip generation on Shaker, at the intersection of Shaker and Chestnut. Pass-by traffic is that traffic that is already on the roadway, going someplace else, and stops at your facility. So pass-by traffic is, if you take a reduction at those intersections for that phenomenon, but not your driveways. The study took a 50% reduction at Shaker or Chestnut. So the driveways had the full trip generation, but what was at Shaker or Chestnut was half that amount. My study, I did not do any pass-by trip generation. That was at a request of Mr. Parent, Bob Parent. He doesn't feel it's, should be used here. 50% is probably a little bit on the high side, but you are going to have pass-by here. People come from Connecticut, go to the Rotary to buy gas and go home. Those people will still come to Massachusetts to buy gas. Hopefully, a number of them will stop here. But they're still going through the same intersection of Shaker and Chestnut. So you will see less traffic than I've generated, but I've done a conservative analysis. I did capacity analysis based, using the, based on the 2010 Highway Capacity Manual, using the SynchroEight software package, which analyzes the entire system, not just one intersection at a time. Existing levels of service at Shaker and Chestnut are level of service C, based on the analysis. With my volumes, it's still level of service C in the PM, both in the AM and the PM peak. The PM is slightly worse. The overall delay in the PM existing is 24.7, almost 25 seconds, average delay per vehicle. With my original calculations, it bumps to 26.3.
Okay.
The site drives, the Shaker Road at the site drive operates level of service A in the build condition during the PM peak. The site drive would be an average delay of 17.6 or a C. The average delay for left turns, turning left, are 8.7 seconds. It's an A. The queue length is less than a tenth of a vehicle calculated over the hour. By the way, these analyses are based on an hourly volume, an hourly period, the heaviest hour during the peak period. Certain 15-minute intervals will be heavier, certain 15-minute intervals will be lighter. But the analysis methodology is based on an entire hour for the peak period. This point, I want to talk a little bit about the driveway locations. As mentioned in both the memos, we've moved the Shaker Road driveway about as far north as we can. as we can on the site. And it's a good distance away, and I think everyone is agreement that's a good location for the driveway. It's beyond the La Fortuna? I've lost the name of the bakery.
La Fortina.
La Fortina. It's north of that, it's away from that, as far as we can really go on there. The Chestnut Road, Chestnut Street driveway is problematic. My first look at it as a traffic engineer to help traffic congestion is get it as far away from Shaker as we can get it. The problem is, the further away you get from Shaker Road, you have the bike trail. And you have people turning right out of the driveway. From my experience and my education as a traffic engineer, having the driveway closer to Shaker Road is an operational capacity issue. Things break down, don't work as well as if it's further away operationally. In my mind, the closer you get to the pedestrian crossing, that becomes a safety issue. The further away you are allows a driver to pull out of the driveway, get turned, get moving, and become aware of his surroundings. I don't know if you've ever really paid that much attention to it. I pay a lot of attention to where people put speed limit signs. They always put them 100 feet beyond the intersection. And you'll find, if you actually pay attention, as you drive, you make the turn, by the time you're paying attention to the road, that speed limit sign is behind you. So from a pure pedestrian standpoint, for the pedestrian bikeway, you want that driveway as close to Shaker Road as you can get it. So we're juggling a position here. We moved the driveway a little bit further towards the bike path, about 10, 15 feet. That puts it more than 50 feet now from the stop bar, which allows queuing for two vehicles. The post-development volume analysis shows that I need queuing length of about 35 feet, around two. So left turns, 95% of the time, will be shorter than from where the driveway is. So you'll have room, at least to get around left-turning vehicles during the peak period, during the PM. The next part about the safety of the pedestrian crossing is the signage. The signage out there is just one sign. It's a 30 by 30 sign. And it's the old standard, a warning sign yellow out there. Nowadays, we have, the UTCD allows you to use a bright fluorescent sign. You're most familiar with that at school crossings. However, that fluorescent, that bright fluorescent yellow can be used and should be used at a place here, too, at a crossing. And I made a suggestion of basically a three-sign panel. And it looks like over at Kuyt, you say, why do you need a trail crossing sign? Why do you need the downward arrow? It's again, I want to get as much of that fluorescent yellow sign in the driver's eye as they're coming up Chestnut towards the bike path. I believe that would be an improvement, not the end-all, be-all, but I think it's an improvement to what's out there. So based on my original analysis, my study, I believe everything would operate safely and efficiently with the way it is currently designed. Based on Monday's meeting, Bob brought up the issue of the trip generation rates that I used. I used land use 945, which is gasoline service station with convenience market. Bob believes that we should use 853, convenience market with gasoline pumps. Now, I'll read you 853, the first two sentences first, before I go into why I selected 945. For 853, the convenience markets surveyed sell gasoline, convenience foods, newspapers, magazines, often beer and wine. This land use includes convenience markets with gasoline pumps where the primary business is selling convenience items, not fueling motor vehicles. Land use 945 gasoline service station with convenience market is, this land use includes gasoline service stations with convenient markets where the primary business is the fueling of motor vehicles. Okay. That's what I have to go on when I select.
Okay.
Land use for facilities. Typically, when I'm looking at these kind of things, I've done half dozen or dozen. If I'm at a point where there's a convenience market with six or less fueling positions, to me, that's more of a market than it is a gas station. This has 10 fueling positions. So I picked 945 for use. However, based on Bob's comments, I decided to go out and see what would happen if I did the trip generation and analysis based on 853, land use 853, convenience market with gasoline pumps. Now, this is where the square footage comes into play. 945 gasoline service station with this, we do the trip generation based on fueling positions. There are 10, because that's the primary business. 853 is a convenience mark with gasoline pumps. The primary business being assumed to be the market. And that means you need to use a square footage of the market for the trip generation rate. I assumed a 4,500-square-foot facility to do trip generation. That says the ADT is 3,803, as opposed to 1628. The AM peak hour generation would be 184, as opposed to 106, which is 92 entering and exiting. And the PM peak hour would be 229, as opposed to 135. Just so you know, that convenience, 853, does allow you to do the generation based on the number of pumps. That's in the middle. So I'm using square footage for this analysis. When I did the analysis, I found that the overall level of service at Shaker Road or Chestnut is still level service C during the morning and afternoon peak period.
All right, if I may, could you read the definition of level C and level D?
Sure.
So that way, everybody's got a better understanding of what's...
The classic definition is more of a feeling...
Not the, inner A, B, C, D?
Yeah, there's A, B, C, D. It's like grading in a paper. A is great, F is failure. A is basically you can drive through an intersection, drive down the road, and you really don't feel any interference from other vehicles. B, you're starting to feel a little bit of interference from other vehicles, but you really don't care. C is you're starting to notice people, and you're starting to have to adjust your movements accordingly. D is now things are getting a little bit worse, you're having to stop more often, you're having to really pay more attention. E is you're starting to get to capacity. F is failure. Terms of numbers, in a signalized intersection, level of service A is an average delay of less than 10 seconds. Average delay B is an average delay of 10 to 20 seconds. Level of service C is an average delay of 20 to 35 seconds. And that's, you're sitting there, and that's how long the average person has to wait to go. D, as I said, is you start to approach capacity, is 35 to 55 seconds. E is 55 to 80 seconds delay. F is anything over 80. More importantly, F is more associated as signal of failed cycles. If you always approach an intersection throughout the hour, and you stop in the queue, you see a red light, light turns green, you don't get through on that green light. Most cycles during the hour that happens, that's an F. Okay? If you approach the end of the queue, and 95% of the cycles get through that signal, that's really considered capacity, which would be an E, right there. So those are the, that's where you are. I could go into unsignalized intersections, still based on delay, a little bit less for each level. But that's how it's done for a signal. As I stated earlier, with my original analysis during the PMP, it was going to be a level service C with an average delay of 26.3 seconds. With the higher numbers, again, no pass-by, putting all the traffic on the intersection, the average delay is now 28.5 seconds. An increase from my original analysis of 2.2 seconds, average delay, and from existing PMP calculated, 3.8 seconds per vehicle, per delay. All approaches operated D are better during all periods. And I would address the issue based on anecdotal evidence on what is seen when Linux lets out at Chestnut. That's more of a 15-minute thing. Factory lets out, a shift lets out, you get three, four, or five cycles that are a problem at Chestnut, and the rest of the time is no real issue. I was out there for 45 minutes between 4 and 4:45 today. I'd be honest, and that's part of the peak period that's analyzed and accounts. I saw no queues backing up really beyond our second driveway on our site. And they always cleared, so there's always a way to get out. And I can answer any questions you have at this point. I don't know how far else you want to go. Oh, in terms of the adding of, prohibiting of right turns on Chestnut, left turns, sorry, left turns on Chestnut, the only real way to do that is to put a raised island in. And you run into some real problems creating a raised island that's going to effectively block people from making a left turn. And what's going to happen is, and I've seen it in a lot of places, and a lot of jurisdictions don't even let you do it, is because what happens is if you put the island there, 20, 23 hours, 22 hours during the day, there's not going to be a whole lot of traffic, the driver's going to come up to the thing and say, gee, I can make a left turn, no problem. But instead of just coming straight, looking to the left, looking to the right, and turning left, you've now got them angled, headed towards the bike path, looking hard over the left shoulder, and almost doing a U-turn to make the left turn. And they are going to do it.
Question.
You know, and that's a problem that we have with prohibiting right turns, is actually building that. This is even worse on a gas station. You're trying to get tankers in and out of the station. The second you make that right turn wide enough for a tanker to maneuver, to allow them to use it, you've totally eliminated any prohibition for the cars to turn left, because it's going to be 22 feet wide. They can pull up, they can do, and then do the turn. We see it all the time. So, and my analysis does show that cars can safely and effectively navigate the site as it is designed.
Okay. The only things I'd supplement is that after Monday's meeting, the additional analysis was done, and the engineer did go out and visit the site. Those are two things. We looked hard at this option of this port chap, funneling people right, which would be west on Chestnut. Based on his conclusions, don't think it's the safest way to go.
Okay. All right, you guys have anything else you'd like to add before I turn over to...
I mentioned a tanker can't turn around inside the site.
Well, just, yeah, I just mentioned one.
Another safety issue.
Well, like I said, we like the tanks where they are. It's really the best place for them, gets them out of the traffic pattern, and that's going to be a regular thing, tanker deliveries, of course. And ideally, that tanker would be able to come here and make a left and go where he, go back to wherever he needs to go. This site, as I mentioned before, it's kind of long this way, skinny this way. Well, skinny this way, with the setbacks, et cetera, it doesn't allow us to create a situation where the tanker can do a, you know, a U-turn onsite. We really want them to be able to come in one curb cut and go out the other. All right. And we certainly don't want them backing up.
Anything else, Jim?
All right. George, I'll start with you.
What are the hours of operation?
24 hours a day.
24, okay. And as you have outdoor seating, is there going to be any seating inside the building?
I don't believe so.
No? No, okay. So we don't have a restaurant?
Correct.
Just clarifying that if there's indoor seating inside the building for food that's purchased there, that turns it into a restaurant. We've been through this, other convenience stores in town. I want to make that point, that that would be a different, a separate, special permit that would be needed if that was ever to happen. Okay?
Thank you for reminding us.
Yeah, well, we just went through that with another convenience store in town, just trying to be consistent. Being at you 24/7, we have had some concerns about noise late at night, particularly dumpsters being emptied or replaced in the middle of the night. Typically, dumpster companies like to come at early in the morning when there isn't much traffic. Is there some way to get a restriction on that so that the neighbors right across the street are not hearing dumpsters at 4:00 AM?
I'm sure we can work on that, right? Your worst name?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. We've actually, to accommodate other residential areas where we have developments, we restricted the times where trash hauling members can and cannot come on dog. We force it.
Okay. Because we have heard that concern already, obviously, and it's something that is important. You have a basement here. What's the elevation of the basement floor versus the water table? Because I know you've got a wetland right behind you there. Water table is high in this area.
We've got, the basement finished floor is at 217.76. And the, so that's the basement finished floor. And the, where the wetlands are, it's 215. So we actually wanted to make sure we could get our, put a footing drain in there and get it up by gravity, daylight it.
Right.
So, yeah, so we intended to get up above the water table.
It's these long metal, it's an issue we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But last question I have, and I'm sure other members have the same issue. Certain times of year, particularly around the holidays and certain Sundays, Lafayette Arantina actually hires a police officer to direct traffic because of the problem they have right now with people trying to make a left turn from Shaker Road into their driveway or from their driveway onto Shaker Road. And I've seen it where, unfortunately, there's three lanes on Shaker Road all the way up just before your parcel starts. At that point, it goes to two lanes. You lose the turning lane, the middle turning lane. And it appears, would appear to me that if someone were trying to make a left turn from Shaker Road, which we see all the time into Lafayette Arantina, and it dacks up traffic, and then somebody's trying to make a left turn from Shaker Road into your place, you've got two conflicting left turns, and nobody's going to go anywhere. How do you see that being, working out in real time? You're the traffic guy.
Take a left at the light on Shaker and then a right at Chestnut.
Well, that would be what a smart person would do.
The other issue, I know, I was actually sitting in La Fortina Plaza. One of the issues there is the grade difference of the parking lot. I actually saw two vehicles bottom out terribly, pulling into the facility. I think that's part of the problem, that people, at least turning into there, that's part of the problem. It's probably a problem coming out as well. People are afraid, so they're moving more slowly. In terms of the gridlock, you hope it doesn't happen, there's nothing, you know, there's no real way to do it unless, you know, even if there's left turn lane there, you may still have that problem. As, you know, as was brought up, would hope people would, you know, if there's a lot of traffic at La Fortina, that they would then use the Chestnut Street driveway.
The left turn arrow, yeah.
Right.
Which would make much more sense. I just needed to raise the issue, because it is, it is an issue right now, particularly at Christmas and Easter and certain Sundays, when they do tremendous, actually, the day before those holidays, when they do a tremendous load of business. I mean, they actually hire, on their own volition, they hire a policeman to direct traffic at those times. Just want to raise that issue. And that's all I had at this point.
And I would also hope that during those times when the officer's there, that he would be cognizant of our driveway as well, to make sure that gridlock, not that he'd help our driveway, per se, but he would help limit the gridlock.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Page?
Certainly.
They just wanted to point out that they're, you know, if that experience happens, that these signs like, do not block the driveway, do not block the entrance, that they would have experience with.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I've seen, I've seen those signs at the FL Roberts at Westwood and North Main, which is also a very high-volume station, which somehow manages to function. And they've got, you know, a car wash there as well, that they do a huge volume of business. And somehow or other, the traffic seems to work there. So I'm not being negative here, I'm just raising some issues that have been pointed out to me and that I happen to be aware of.
Thank you.
You can actually paint that in the blue one, do not block the driveway.
Okay.
First question is on the basement.
Basement?
Basement of the building. It sounds like you're really not sure how many square feet it's going to be.
It sounds like you're really not sure how many square feet it's going to be. I mean, is it definitely going to be half the building, full building? Because I think the storage area... Not the full building, it'll be half or less. It's utilities down there. We use it for storage, I mean, paper goods. We generate a lot of paper in the registers. I guess my question is, is the entire building going to have a full basement under it and then only half used?
No.
Okay. And the square footage, I believe it makes a difference as far as even for storage, as far as the amount of parking that's needed. Is it 3,000?
One per 3,000.
One per 3,000, so if it ends up being 3,400 square feet...
It won't be, it'll be less than two.
Okay.
And Robin pointed out at another roundtable meeting, so we added a parking space just to be sure, but it's going to be about half.
Okay.
Well, the other thing to note is with the additional storage space, it cuts down on the delivery truck traffic because we could take a larger paper good delivery, and so it's less deliveries because of the storage.
Okay. I noticed in the front corner, you were talking about signage, a ground sign. Do we have any idea exactly what type of ground sign are we looking at?
The sound in the front corner, correct me if I'm wrong, is a flag, which is required by law, you have to have a flagpole sign showing your prices.
Okay.
That, whatever brand goes with it, might describe me correctly. So, if it's Shell, it has the Shell and the yellow colors, and it has the, you know, three grades of gasoline, and you're required by law to have that.
Okay.
That's what's allowed, that's what will be out in that corner.
I just, like I said, just trying to get a visual of it. And the canopy, typically, they'll do Sunoco Irving or whatever, is that all back there?
The brand colors.
The brand colors are all on it?
Correct.
Obviously, depending on which brand is chosen.
Right.
And at this time, we still don't know what type of co-branding is going into the building.
That's right.
Part of these is, there's a lot more traffic typically, at least from what I've seen with, let's say, Dunkin' Donuts, people running in and out on their way to work to grab a coffee as compared to, I don't know, maybe a Subway, but that's at lunchtime. Like I said, it's just, and that goes to the traffic study as to, I mean, a 4,500-square-foot building to me is a convenience store to where a lot of people will be using it as a convenience store. I don't think, I think this probably falls somewhere in between those two reports.
Which is why we did both studies, so we wanted to answer the question of the superintendent.
All right, I'm going to, just not to interrupt you, I'd like to follow through that. Right now, you're showing a convenience store, but you're also showing space for a future entity such as a Dunkin' Donuts or a Subway. Did you factor that into your equation?
No, there is no way to factor that in. This is, when you're using these generation rates, they're based on studies at real places.
Okay.
So, within there, while I haven't gone into it, within there, there, I'm sure there were stores with Dunkin' Donuts, with Subways, with Hardee's, with, I actually know one by my daughter's house that has a Burger King with it. Spinks down in South Carolina, they do a lot of Burger King and Hardee's with theirs. And these studies are done at real places, they're not just theoretical numbers. The actual, the generation rates are based on studies of actual facilities around the country for the past 20, 30 years.
Okay. And that's the database that the superintendent asked us to use because it does incorporate those potential options.
All right, that's, I want to clarify that because it's definitely...
That's in there now, whether, you know, now, I would also state that, and I've stated at the meeting, these numbers would be low if there was a drive-through.
There is no...
A drive-through, a drive-through's a different animal.
Well, which creates more problems.
And, but that's, and that is something that is not included in these numbers, okay?
Okay.
But, you know, when you have, some of these facilities are up to 10,000 square feet in this land use. And I gotta believe those have, you know, those are the Burger King ones, you know, like I've seen.
Ralph, will you finish, Cory?
No, for now, I think I've touched on the basics.
Ralph, we've seen Ralph five times. He knows the project as well as we do. He's been at every roundtable.
For right now, thank you.
I had a couple of concerns. For delivery-wise, where's everything going to get delivered? Is it going to get delivered in the front of the building or in the back? Got some tables and chairs there, you know?
Now, we set this up so that burger parking spaces across the front.
Yep.
They end right here.
Okay.
This is our dumpster, which is fully screened.
Yep.
We did put a tree there, but also it's, we've got a cedar, you know, fence-type enclosure with a metal frame. And we've left about 20 feet in front of it, so that delivery vehicle can fit in here entirely without even getting past the parking spaces. And then we have a ramp right here.
Okay.
So, yeah, we wanted it set up that way.
Dumpster dumping is going to be kind of difficult there. I know in the mornings, you guys, and some of the neighbors are going to be complaining about in the mornings. Afternoons, I think are going to be rough if you're going to get that much traffic in there for fuel. I think that's one of your issues.
Well, I think he said he's willing to restrict it, you know?
Right. Yeah. Timing is definitely crucial.
Eleven o'clock, one o'clock?
We can certainly pigeonhole our whole architecture because of the timeframe. Dumpster dumping is a very quick process.
Right.
You can be on off the property in a minute, really.
Just on a windy day, I've seen some stuff fly around and just in that one, you know, if it's in that one spot, I mean, I think that would be one of your, maybe one of your goals, just to nail down some sort of timeframe where they can be in to make everybody happy. The other thing that was, that was a concern was the runoff. How deep is that basin going to be in that corner there? Only my concern is, there's a bike path behind there, a lot of children, a lot of dogs. How is that going to dissipate, I guess?
Well, it should never overflow the spillway, except in a 100-year storm.
Because typically, in July, right around carnival time, we usually get a good, good sunken.
Yeah, I've got a feeling.
This guy predicts the weather.
No, like I said, the runoff from this whole parking area here, currently, the whole site just flows directly down into here.
Yep.
We're obligated to have no increase in runoff.
Correct.
So, we've put in this significant retention basin so that even though the calculations with these type of soils show, you're talking about fractions of a cubic feet per second, I think it was like .39 cubic feet per second. And we went out there in, it's in our drainage report, in a, you know, a multi-inch rainstorm, and there was not a lot running off the site because it's a good site, it has good soils. So, we had to recreate that. So, we created this basin so that virtually all the runoff gets recharged here without passing over the property line.
Okay.
You know, it's a really aggressive drainage design.
Is it very steep?
Three to one.
Okay. Gravel bottom or grass?
Nope, grass. As a matter of fact, we originally had a riprap outlet, but because we expect essentially no flow out of this spillway, and the fact that we have to give some width to the spillway, we, we're going to just bury a permanent erosion mat so that this is just going to be grassed. You aren't going to see any riprap, it's not going to look like a DOT outlet at all.
Just a lot easier to maintain.
Yeah, you can mow it, and it's going to look a lot better.
And you've created a path, right, to go down?
Where's that? Well, yeah, for maintenance, that's another problem with basins is sometimes they're hard to maintain, so they grow up with, you know, grass and saplings and all that. But we've graded a drivable, you know, for maintenance equipment, a drivable access down into the basin so they can maintain it.
Sounds good. I'm going to reuse these guys' touch base and everything else. I think I'm pretty good.
Todd?
My biggest issue is the curb cut on Chestnut. I understand you moved it 15 feet. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm handicapped a little bit here, but I know the property very well. I used to own the property across the street where KFC used to be, and I sold it to Little Florentino. So, I know the area very, very well. I've seen a lot of backup there, and I'd rather see some type of safety improvement, and I don't know what the answer is, for the bike path and move that entrance further west because I just feel that so close to the intersection with two cars stacking, anyone coming out of there trying to make a left-hand turn, most times, certainly not at 2:00 in the morning, but most times when there's traffic going through the intersection, it's going to be almost an impossible feat, particularly if cars are stopping at the red light on Shaker going south and making a right-hand turn. As soon as they make that right-hand turn, you've got a guy coming out of the gas station trying to make a left on Chestnut, and you start creating a bottleneck. Those are the things that are on my mind regarding this project. I think it's going to look beautiful. I think the rest of the project looks, you know, looks professionally done, of course. I feel the operator is probably right on target with being able to, you know, conduct a business like this in East Long Metal. But I just am having a very difficult time with the curb cut on Chestnut Street.
Well, I'm not an engineer either, so we're both handicapped equally. But the engineers, including your superintendent, after going back and forth, agreed on that location, you know, as a better, the best optimal location for, as he said, a problematic, you know, length of road.
And that's for full service, right in, right out, right left, everything.
See, the issue, the issues you're raising with Shaker are operational. You hope the drivers, if they can't get into the left turn lane this cycle, when it clears that, will make their left into the left turn lane.
The key word in that sentence is hope.
Well, they're drivers and they're human. However, my bigger concern is someone turning right out of the driveway and not getting focused in time for the person with the carriage walking across the bike path.
No, I understand that.
And there's no real way, and the issue is that all of the tools in our toolbox for crosswalks, whether it be signage, whether it be rapid flash beacons, whatever, if the driver is making a move and doesn't, and can't get, isn't cognizant of the bike path in time, all those mechanisms won't help. So, I mean, and there's not a whole lot of things we can do for bike paths. You could put signage up, you can put in rapid flash beacons, but again, those are more, you know, especially the rapid flash beacons, are more used in places where you have a long straightaway, where people can see them for a long period of time to react. That's my, my bigger concern is really the reaction time. Person turning right out of the site, not paying attention, you know, he's looking over his shoulder, he turns right, he accelerates, and I said, oh my God, I'm at the, I'm at the, I'm at the trail. So, the issue is that to the west is a safety issue in my mind, to the east is an operational issue. And since the real problems are going to occur maybe during the peak hours, two to three hours during the day, that I think it's a better option to have the operational issues a little bit on the downside, but improve the safety of the, and I don't know how else to do it.
I understand the problem, and I'm not saying I have the solution, but I just don't like that curb cut, that intersection, so close to the intersection.
Which is, but that is also the location of the curb cut that was there originally.
Yeah, I understand, but, you know, originally, it was 30 years ago when there's a bar there, the use was different, the whole intersection was different. I understand it's grandfathered in and so forth.
We have tried to work with, I just, you know, I'm trying to balance the worst of two worlds.
No, I understand. I understand you're trying very hard to make it work. I'm not implying that you're not, but I just...
We shared your concerns, which is why we moved it back, moved it forward, moved it in the middle.
I mean, obviously, you know, ideally, it's, nothing's going to be ideal on Chestnut because you've got a small, a narrow lot anyways to deal with. But a better solution is probably a right out only, but, you know, it still doesn't, that doesn't do anything for the argument you're making regarding the bike path.
Safety, the bike path, right. And that's the, and I, you know, as a professional engineer, I'm going to, I'm going to err on the side of safety.
Yeah, I'm just telling you that, Ross.
Yeah, I understand.
That's what I'm struggling with.
When Mark first showed me the plan, I said, can't you move that further away? And then when he started looking at it, I saw the bike path, and I started looking at pictures of it where the bike path is, it's, I get nervous, I really do, about people turning right and not paying attention. It's like, I brought the stop sign up. It's my pet peeve in my hometown, that's why I brought it up. They put the stop sign 75 feet beyond the intersection at every intersection. And by the time you turn right, you make a move, turn left, you have no clue what speed you're going, supposed to go. That's my pet peeves, and that, it's in my mind in terms of, that's because the driver, as the driver makes a turn, they're not looking down the road. Their eyes are shifting from looking to their left, they're shifting, they're going to, they have to move back to the center, they have to center the car in the road, they're probably going to, at that point, check their speedometer, or not, or look someplace else, and there is a 50, 100 feet, there's a period of time where they're not really paying attention to what's far down the road. Now, the other thing is that when you're turning right, you're, the way you look is you look right, you look left, then you make your move. Well, when you looked right, there may not have been anyone in the crosswalk. You look left, someone walks in the crosswalk, you turn out, and then all of a sudden, they're there. That makes, that kind of makes me nervous. You know, that's why I'm saying, I understand, I know, I understand where you're coming from, but once...
If I may. Sure. But I had a meeting with the superintendent of the public works today, and one of the suggestions he made was, right now, there's a raised curb that lets pedestrian track flow both ways effortlessly. One of the suggestions he made was to put something there that would stop that, so at the very least pedestrians have to turn their body to at least see what's coming. And the argument he made was somebody jogging with a baby carriage, got the earplugs in, not paying attention. They basically have a straight path, they may look, they may look quick. As to your argument, if somebody pulls out, you know, there's a risk of disaster. If we can slow down the pedestrian traffic, I think that would help, whether we do it or whether you do it.
The issue is how you do that. My town doesn't put anything across the paths.
Right, that's where we are now. But I think it is...
You do more than my town. You actually put signs, the stop signs at the path. There's another town, next town over from me, that has a paved path that's wide enough for a golf cart, four-by-four type of thing. And they are now on their third version of blocking that. The first version was bollards set in the pavement, round bollards that you could lift out. That lasted a year. The next one was T-bars that you could lay down. That lasted two or three years. When I went walking there last fall, they pulled all that out and have gates with locks on them. And the gate is about two and a half feet. So, I don't know, you know, that's really, I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, we just got to get the ideas on the table and discuss.
But that's really what your maintenance people can live with.
We have no objection to it.
Okay.
Okay. The police department at one of the roundtables said they originally went with nothing so that they could zoom down there in time of emergency if someone was on the bike path and there was an accident. I think they said at one of the roundtables, thus far, there have been none, that need has thankfully not arise, arose, arisen, so, but we have no objection, you know, in terms of the overall design to incorporate something that would slow down the errant biker, runner, jogger, you know, carriage pusher and that.
To be honest, from, been doing this for years, on-site plans with emergency vehicle access and things, probably the gates are probably the best bet. I don't know, but you're going to have locks on them.
I don't think that's going to fly. I don't think that's going to work.
But the point is, we're willing to work with the town.
Okay, I think there's an agreeable, you know, solution that I think a little bit of effort on everybody's part.
Actually, something really, just popped in my head, do you put in a speed bump for pedestrians?
And that's certainly an option?
You raise it, and on the top, you put the tactile strip, you know, in the middle of the crosswalk. I'm just thinking off the top of my head.
Yep, no, this is an idea by the town engineer, I thought was a great idea.
But we can work, we can work with you.
The way out.
Yep.
Some way.
Okay, I'm not to interrupt, but I'll let you finish.
Yeah, and my last, so that's my concern, one of my concerns. The other one is, once again, we've had this conversation a few times here tonight. What is the footprint of the main level, not counting the basement?
4,500 square feet.
Okay, so, because I was a little confused when it sounded like it was 4,500 for the total building, split in half, so half of it was basement.
No, 4,500 is the first main floor.
So, it's 4,500, and then there's an additional, whatever the additional basement is.
2,000 square feet.
Okay, so, we're talking 6,000 square feet total, two floors?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Basement and one floor.
The basement is strictly for their own...
No, I understand that.
Yeah, their own quality of life.
I understand customers are not going in the basement.
Correct.
Right, chances are, a customer going in there wouldn't know that store from one that has a, you know, doesn't have a basement.
Yeah, they don't, the customer doesn't care if you have a basement or not.
The square footage of, you know, the usable square footage on the first floor is going to be very, very similar.
So, the 4,000 square foot convenience store seems pretty substantial.
It's, well, substantially, yes, but it's, it's typical these days. I think you've probably seen a lot of construction in the industry. It's, it's the business model, it's what, you see Commonwealth Farms is doing a lot of construction, and they're doing a lot of stores this size. It's, it's fairly standard.
No, I, I, I agree it's standard, and I'm very familiar with, with the process and the industry, but it sounds pretty substantial as compared to gas sales. In other words, it sounded like we were starting out the conversation saying, "Well, the heavy emphasis is on gas, and it's kind of a incidental, or a secondary use as convenience store," whereas it really sounded like convenience store really is a pretty, obviously, it's important to the business, but I mean, it really sounds like it's pretty primary. I'm sure gas is too, and you've got Connecticut people coming up to Massachusetts to buy gas because of prices and so forth, but 4,000 square foot convenience store with a, you know, a leased area for either Subway or Dunkin' Donuts or someone like that, sounds like the convenience store is more than just incidental.
I'll, I'll let the Belcher people speak to that if you want some more dialogue. One, they're in the oil business, so...
Yeah, of course they are.
And secondly, you know, if you look at a lot of those 4,000 square foot stores that are around, not many have 10 fueling stations. So, I mean, this is a large, and finally, Steve's numbers show it doesn't make a difference really whether you treat it under the standard that the superintendent asked for as a convenience store and a gas station, or a gas station and a convenience store.
Okay, I'm, I'm just voicing the two things that are on my mind.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, James.
Anything else?
That's good.
All right, I'm gonna actually pick up where he left off, just for some clarification points. I know we talked about the 4,500 for one level. In the rendering, he showed two dormers up above the building could in fact be big enough to put square footage on the second floor. Is there any intent to do that?
No.
Okay.
It's for light.
Okay, I just, that was a clarification point. My second point is, he showed the entrance being projected out past the building. The drawing I'm seeing now really doesn't show that projection. Could you give us an idea of where that projection's gonna end up in relationship to the parking?
Yeah, you see, you see the columns, the little, well, put it, yeah, so you see these columns here?
Yes.
So, those are right, you know, they're far enough in from the edge of the sidewalk, so this is the, that's that projection.
Someone asked, "Is it right up to the parking lot?"
Yeah.
Okay.
The sidewalk.
Yep, or sidewalk.
Yeah, so it's covered going in.
Okay. My next question is, you talked about a canopy over the gas pumps. I know there's, topography-wise, it drops off very quickly. And you talked about the bushes and landscaping not being in the line of sight of the traffic. Will a canopy at its height conflict with any of the eyesight and/or traffic sightlines?
No, well, one, it's set back, you know, generously, but in, you know, I guess that's about 70 feet.
What are the, the two elevations from the road to the top of the canopy, if you can?
Yeah.
And/or to the bottom of the...
The, the grade at the canopy is average about 228.
Top or, or...
To the, to the grade.
Okay.
The ground, yeah. And the clearance, we, I just wanna check what we'd use. We would probably use 15-foot clearance or 14.6. Okay, I'm getting there. It's 14-foot six clear.
Okay, from the highest, what's the highest elevation of the road from the 228 bottom elevation?
From the, well, so if you went straight across, the road is about, looks like it's gonna be about 2, 229 and a half or so, right? If you want, what I'm saying is, this was...
I think the point is, we're raising...
Yeah. For clarification purposes, I wanna make sure we get...
That's at 228.
Okay.
And you're at, say, 229 and a half right here. So, it's about a foot, foot and a half below the road.
Okay, I mean, maybe obvious to some people, I just, I just wanna get some clarification.
No, that's a good point. We are gonna, it's gonna be filled.
Okay. The parking lot on the left, too, I know, I was told today that was employee parking and slash vacuum cleaners for what have you. Is that an accurate statement?
Yep.
All right. And the other concern I have, it's not really for you, but it's for this board, the opposite two corners are also zoned for the same thing, so potentially, we could have this in the future. Taxi machinery is empty. I'm hoping someday that will be filled with a tenant and that more, that many more tax dollars to town. Going back to what you said, you're considering it's a Level C. Our town engineer thinks it's a Level D, you know, and that's open to interpretation. I understand that. My concern is, this is gonna impact the intersection as well. The future impact could be much more severe, so I think when you can at least think of the future, again, I know that's not your...
It's hard for us to plan for that.
It's not for your burden to bear, it's our burden to bear. That being said, I like the idea of the traffic turning right. At the very least, it takes tractor, tractor-trailer trucks out of the intersection equation. So, at peak hours, if the tractor-trailer are trying to get through there with the traffic, I think that's gonna be one less thing if we could get them to turn right. I do realize the cars probably have a tendency to turn left if and when they feel like it, but I do like the idea of them turning right, so...
That's good. So, you're think, you're talking about tractor-trailers using this facility?
Tractor-trailer trucks when they bring the deliveries for the fuel.
Okay.
So, so far, I'm saying, if they're going out, rather than giving them the option to go left or right, I would rather see them go right, because if they go left, obviously, they're gonna conflict with the traffic and/or the intersection. Again, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm just giving you my two cents, my common sense.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause if they turn left, they have no place to go but through the intersection.
Correct, right, which...
But obviously...
But if they turn right, they're not going over the crossing.
I, I agree. I'm, I'm, there's no, unfortunately, I don't think there's any perfect solution here, but I think we have to find a happy compromise.
The, and the, and the thing is, if we, if you restrict it to rights out only with the tractor-trailer, you know, there's no way the cars are gonna observe it.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
You know, and that's just, it's just, you know, that's just a fact of life.
Yeah, and all your, your great comments, but I think you can see we've found most of these permutations.
Well, absolutely. You know, forgive me for asking some of the obvious questions.
No, it's fine.
These are questions people have asked us. I wanna make sure we try to clarify those points as many as we can.
Well done.
Um, does anybody want to say anything before we open up the public?
Can I make a point, just to address the, the trailer leaving it to the right?
Certainly.
Belcher's principal supplier is United. United is, is the road, all of us, United, right up on Shaker. So, you're gonna be directing their principal caller away from that place of business.
I'll, I take that one one step further. You're gonna direct them away and down across the bike path to do a U-turn, come back across the bike path to the intersection.
A valid point, certainly a valid point.
Or go to the next intersection, take a left and come around the block.
As well as every other car who gets stuck on the other side.
The next intersection down is way down, and so you're sending them down the bend, and then you're sending them through.
Industrial drive.
So, you know, you're creating a lot more traffic technically.
As well as any other car that may take, comes at that exit, is a, "Oh, I can't take a left here, I'm gonna have to go down the road, across the bike path, do a U-turn, come back across the bike path to the intersection."
All right. Does anybody, anything else before we open up the public?
Mr. Chairman, I did wanna note that from your plan, all the brush that's existing now along the rail trail, at least where your building is gonna be, is gonna be cleared out. So, it looks like, at least from this, that the sightline to the bike path should be better. I know that's been some concern in the past. The DPW's actually gone in and moved some of the brush and all back. That's a good thing, thank you.
As is the brush already been cleared.
I did notice that today. I was well aware that across the street, when you come down Chestnut to make a left, they've cleared out all the brush on that side. Question for the traffic engineer, if you take a right out of the parking lot, what's gonna catch your attention first, a yellow beacon or a sign on the side of the road?
The yellow beacon's gonna be above the sign.
No, that wasn't the question. The question was, what's gonna draw your attention?
Chances are, the beacon will attract your attention more rapidly.
Okay.
But doesn't the beacon require pedestrian...
Well, that's also, it's pedestrian-activated.
Yeah, it is. Correct.
Correct.
And it, it is being used on Maple Street right now, so it's effective, pedestrians do use it.
Do they press?
Yes, oh, yes.
Wasn't, wasn't that brought up, so every section's supposed to be done eventually down the road?
I have no idea. I haven't heard.
Of course, to your point, we looked at that, too, and of course, people are not, don't tend to get off their bike and press it, you know, those people owners don't stop and press it.
I think that's a concern of ours more than you.
A walker will do it, but the other categories of users generally don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one more question.
Certainly.
Is it the intent to get a beer and wine license for this place or not at this point?
To refer to these folks?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Just so, you understand.
Okay, anybody?
I got one more.
Certainly.
Is that primarily gas, or is it gonna be diesel there also?
There will be diesel. I guess these guys will tell me if I'm wrong, but the idea...
And which pumps would be?
Right, the, the outside lanes, these would be gasoline, and this would be gasoline and diesel, and gasoline and diesel.
And that's two pumps per set, per section, right?
One pump on the island where you can fuel on either side.
And that'd be two pumps on each side?
Um, I'm not sure.
One pump with two nozzles on each side?
Yes.
Yes, those would be, yeah.
So, four nozzles total.
Right, four of the ones with diesel.
Yep. Anybody else before we open up the public? All right, because this is just a special permit, we're gonna open up to the public. I would ask, you state your name and address.
Do you want us to step back?
You can certainly sit there. Relax. So, is there anybody that would like to make a statement? Yes, your name and address, please.
First name Patricia, last name Bangsness. I lived on Great Woods, Canterbury Circle.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions and a comment, actually. Have you thought about one way in and one way out? Like, no two-way access, you know, one way in and out on Chestnut or vice versa?
Okay, Steve?
No, we have not, have not looked at that. The, one of the issues that you will have is that you could end up putting Chestnut or Shaker into D, even though on the C, because you're gonna put all the traffic on one approach. And that means people who are now would turn left, let's, let's use the Shaker Road driveway. I have, with the new numbers, 30, 39, 40 vehicles turning left from the Shaker Road driveway heading north. Well, if you make it one way, those people then become left turns from Shaker, from Chestnut onto Shaker. That's just one movement. The analyses show that, you know, things will work fine, even during the peak periods, we'll have, be able to operate, so I haven't looked at it.
Okay.
It just looks like very narrow, for me, I don't know how to read these plans, but to me, it just looks like a very narrow entrance. It looks like it's gonna be hard for a car to come in and a car to go out.
Do we have the dimensions of those entrance and exits?
Yeah, they're, they're actually...
That's actually one question I asked today.
Yes, they're probably, they are wider, no, they're wider than what you would, 30 feet at the, at the neck on Shaker Road, and 30 feet at the, the neck on Chestnut, and, you know, routinely, you'd see 24-foot.
Okay.
So, they're not so wide to be, you know, confusing, but I think they're generous enough to make it easy to get in and out.
Okay.
As I said, I live on Canterbury Circle, and I don't have any young children, but there's probably a good 100, 150 kids within that whole development. And I'm just thinking, this is gonna be a magnet for the kids, which you don't have a problem with, but my husband and I tried to walk one day just to go to Left Fiorentina, and we took our life in our hands trying to get there. Is there gonna be a sidewalk put in maybe from, from the development?
Well, this is a bone of contention amongst this party in the town.
'Cause these kids are gonna be...
I'm not disagreeing with you. We, we need a better sidewalk plan. What we have, unfortunately, that's like, that's not up to these gentlemen. That's a town matter which we are, you know, trying to address. That's been brought up on several occasions for several other instances. But we can't ask them to do that, because we can't ask, but that is a concern of ours.
Like little ridges crossing that?
Well, I'd love to see a pedestrian way, a bridge built over the road, that would solve all the problems, but I can't ask...
Yeah, a crosswalk.
No. You know, if they were offering that, great, but I don't think they are.
Stay the sidewalk.
Right, so, down which way?
Towards the bike track.
Okay, right, yeah, right. I, I appreciate that, but I think she's, she's more subtly right.
Your points well taken.
Believe me, I wish there was more that we could do, not to say that we aren't trying to get more.
The same, you know, there're gonna be push buttons at the crosswalk, you know, at the intersection for these kids to...
That's a good point.
Yeah, I'm just thinking. And the last thing is, people are horrible drivers anyway, so you're right, some of these things are just gonna be because that's where they're... But I have sat at that intersection many times and see the cars come down Chestnut, and they, they don't stop. They just, they don't stop. They'll go, and they'll push the red till it's really red, and then, you know, they won't stop. Is, I don't know, is there a light at the top of Chestnut, such a flashing that says, is a red, red light coming?
Yeah, at, at, beyond, beyond the crest, coming down over Chestnut, there's a sign that comes out, well, it's always lit that says, "Signal ahead."
Yeah.
And then when it's red, it says, "Red signal ahead."
Some of the bulbs are burned out, by the way.
This is fine, we'll make it up. Robin, I noticed that today. That is far enough back, and that is put up there, not because you can't really see the signal, but because of the crest of the curb.
Exactly.
Car's queued up on the hill.
Yeah.
You need the warning to stop, but that is there, and it's needed. I saw it, I was grateful it was there.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right. Yes, sir?
My name is Bob Hill. I was a 3104 truck. I also own probably 305 Shaker Road and 301 Shaker Road, and I'm a principal of United Transport also. I can speak to the, the station itself, and it's probably one of the easiest stations for a tractor-trailer getting in and out. Excuse me. I disagree that, I don't think it's gonna be an issue going left onto Chestnut Street, only because the light is delayed coming down Chestnut Street, which would give traffic plenty of time to get out of there, to get back into, to Chestnut Street going east. And also, because Shaker Road has a delay going, excuse me, left onto Chestnut Street, it gives the, the traffic coming out of that station plenty of time to get into the line of traffic going either south or north on Shaker. I can also speak to, I've known Ellie Belcher and had associations with them for about 40 years now, and they're certainly a quality company, and I don't think anybody here needs to speak about the biggest failures.
Right. All right, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Athene Seleski. I'm at 10 Green Willow Drive in Long Meadow. I'm a Hebrew community, and I'm believing. Just several questions in listening to the presentation, which was very thorough this evening. But on the traffic study, I didn't hear or mention anything about air pollution, and I know with pedestrian walkways, pedestrian seating that's anticipated or dining outside, whether some thought was given to that with the increased traffic, particularly with queuing in the intersection. Also, a dark sky element for lighting, if this is gonna be something that's operational 24 hours a day for neighboring surrounding areas, that might be problematic. Might be something that engineers and architects may wanna consider. Not seeing, having seen the plan, only when I can eyeball from here, there was mention about parking in front of the store. I would suspect that you'll have plate glass looking, your tenants would be able to visually keep their eye on the pumps, whether they would be on a raised platform or whatever, but I would think that there would be some concern, oftentimes, people fuel and then go into the convenience store, and I would be wondering whether there would be, with your bailout lanes, issues or concern for pedestrian traffic from the fueling station or pumps into the convenience store, whether that should be looked at. Also, I don't know if your traffic engineer has taken a look at the intersection and calculated the amount of accidents that may have occurred at the Chestnut-Shaker Road vicinity. I have to agree with Mr. Kingston, hearing about a Subway or potential Dunkin' Donuts, that too, Dunkin' Donuts does have trailers coming in to deliver their foodstuffs, and I think, too, you get into the issue of Title V with the restaurant and food preparation, and that takes a whole different skew and takes this project to a whole different level. And I just mention that as a courtesy for the planning board to keep that in mind, also with liquor deliveries, beer and wine that might be anticipated. Again, my remarks are simply for maintaining the quality of life. I don't, I'm not a resident of town, I live in Long Meadow, but I think we're in a prudent stage right now where these things, I think, obviously are going to be affecting the quality of life, not only for those that are immediate butters, but for the community out in large. And I think you will have a very good influx of traffic coming from Connecticut into... into this, right over the line for purchasing gasoline and I think it'd be very, very increased. I know, having been employed by a competitor recently, that there was traffic coming in from Connecticut into a Southwest station and the traffic was very, very increased and very, very busy. And I bring in the noise, air pollution issue, again, with Title V that should be investigated. So, and also I didn't know, I know that you're going to be having gasoline and diesel, is, were you also going to be dispensing D E F?
No.
Fluid?
No, not a dispenser.
All right, very good, thank you.
Right, to adjust a few, as far as the smog issue or the noise issue, that's unfortunately, that's not something that, it was in our bylaws, it's in our purview, so that's something we can't ask for. The next one, the lighting, I think they've presented us with a lighting, they've explained how that's gonna be lit, what's gonna be lit and, and what the dynamics of that are gonna be. As far as pedestrian traffic conflicting with a vehicle or traffic, I think unfortunately that's, that's part of this situation anywhere you go. I don't think this situation will be any more unique than another gas station, typical convenience store. So I think we're, you know, we're stuck with that. And finally, we talked about the Dunkin' Donuts issue or Subway issue. I think right now, you guys are just, we're talking about the gas station slash convenience store. If in the future they wanna go that route, they would have to come back before this board and then those concerns as far as food preparation, things like that, would have to be addressed at a later date. But right now, what they're proposing is the gas station slash convenience store, you know, not to, it's not redundant, but if it does change, they will come back before us. So hopefully I've answered some of your questions.
And we, at our roundtable Monday, the traffic officer was there.
Rick Bates.
Rick Bates. And I, we did discuss crash at the intersection. He said there's no real issues here.
Okay.
He said basically, the biggest issue he had here was coming down Chestnut from the east, looking down towards the south on Shaker, the brush there was blocking the sightlines, which is why we went out and cleared it this week. But that was really, his only concern was that sightline there. He said there is no real history of, of crashes here that is anything other than you would expect that, a signalized intersection.
All right, is there anybody else before we, yes, sir?
Ralph Masangio, I've been a resident of East Long Meadow most of my life. The traffic situation in the, in the Rotary is a big concern for everybody. I think this would actually help alleviate some of the Connecticut traffic coming in to beat the prices on Saturdays, as we all know. Also with your storage lockers, you know, Coyote's Den and all that, they have, there's a lot of RVs, there's a lot of plumbers, landscapers that store their, you know, gasoline vehicles in there and that would save them from coming to the center of town also. So I think if anything, the, the increase of traffic in that area might be minimal, but I think it would help the traffic in the center of town with much larger scale.
Yeah, that was a general consensus, consensus today, our meeting too, it would try to alleviate some of the Rotary traffic, unfortunately, I think we're still gonna be stuck with a tough...
From all your, I guess it would be, let's say Kibbie Road, all that area, I mean, those people are just bypassing the town, if they don't wanna go to the center. They're going into, in Long Meadow, there's really no service stations that are that convenient. So you're going into Springfield to spend your, your fuel dollars also, so you have a cool, got a captive audience there, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm, can we have your, your last name and address?
Masangio, Ralph Masangio.
All right, yes, ma'am, in the back.
In the address.
Hold on, excuse me, for once, and your address. Yes, please.
Where do you work your road?
Thank you, all right, sorry, all right, yes, ma'am.
Mary Ellen Fish, two fifty-nine Chestnut Street. I'm, I'm unhappy that it's gonna be twenty-four seven, because right now, at least we get a break, everybody closes up mid-evening or early evening. And now we're gonna have traffic all the time, lights lit all the time. And I do think too, it's gonna be a magnet for the kids to gather down there. And I think it's gonna be a big problem for the rail trail. Because a lot of times I see the traffic, you get multiple cars stacked up because there's a lot of people going across the rail trail and they have to stop to let them cross. And with people trying to come out of a gas station yet and turning, it's just gonna make that much more of a hazard for people.
Okay.
I'm also, at the bottom of Chestnut Street, if you're coming out from town on Shaker and you're, certain times of the day, you wanna make a left-hand turn up Chestnut, you have to go two, three lights before you get a chance to turn. Is there any possibility that there'll be a turn light there for that traffic?
That's something that's been raised. Right now, the opinion is wait and see, probably not the answer you're looking for, but unfortunately, we don't know what's gonna happen based, other than based on, you know, this gentleman's interpretation, our engineer's interpretation. So that option is still on the table if and when, we talked about timed lights for peak hours. So, again, unfortunately, we don't have all the answers, you know, these gentlemen have a right to go there, but we also have to make sure that we take everybody's, everybody's problems in or, the word I'm looking for.
Concerns.
Into consideration, so. So we're trying to do the best we can to incorporate, it's not a perfect site, we know that, but we're trying to do the best we can to try and incorporate and make everybody happy.
Mr. Chairman, may I just add one thing? Her concern about the left turns, southbound Shaker onto Chestnut, if we prohibit lefts out of our sight, those, those people turning left out of the sight, I have a fairly good percentage of them going straight on Chestnut, they're gonna have to go up to the Shaker Road, turn right out of Shaker Road, then turn left onto Chestnut, because that's the only way they're gonna be able to back up Chestnut.
Right. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Gail Moran, two twenty-six Shaker Road.
Okay.
Right across the street.
Beautiful.
My concerns that you haven't completely addressed are, well, the twenty-four seven I'm not happy with, like Mary Ellen had said, Detroit neighbors behind us, the lights are an issue, it sounds, I'm gonna address that. But also, and you said the dumpster, you know, there's times you need to fix that too, you know, that would be good, I'd like to know what they are. But also, what about the deliveries? You know, there's, there's gonna be delivery drivers too for the bread and groceries and in the gas station and, you know, and at twenty-four seven, like you said, the least amount of traffic is in the middle of the night and that's for the wee hours of the morning to get the groceries in or whatever. And right now, like Mary Ellen said, we've lived there for twenty-nine years and it's been fine and we like it. But, like she said, at five-thirty at night, everything's dark and everything's closed and it's done. And on Sunday and Monday, nothing is open, because most of the stores or anything that's open on Saturday, they take Monday off, so Sunday and Monday, it's completely quiet. And now, we've got twenty-four seven of traffic, of noise, of dumpster, of deliveries, of cars waiting with their boom boxes of waiting to gas until they turn off their engine, you know, I can just imagine.
I, I know.
You know, all the things that, that now you're not going to get a break from and the fact that it's gonna be lit also then, you know, Sunday, Monday, all the time, all night. So that's a complaint.
All right, do you guys wanna address the delivery issues?
I think we address the delivery issues, uh, ninety-nine point nine percent of our current grocery drivers and so forth suppliers are delivering during normal business hours. They don't want to be delivering all the time. We don't want them there at a time, we want them there present when our manager, store, or, or senior store management is there to give you after checking in with orders. Typically, that stuff is, is all happening between seven and four or five P M timeframe, where it's not, we can certainly force that, wouldn't that be good?
That would be good, but, okay, so my other things are landscaping, like you're putting all that in, which is great, but it's gonna look pretty and I appreciate that, looking across the street instead of a darkness, which we like, that would be something to look at. But will it, is there gonna be underground watering or something where if no one takes care, if you put it in, it looks great for a little while, but then come the summer months and it's just a gas station, you know, who's responsible to take, there's gonna be sprinklers to take care of that? So that it'll look nice continually? And the other thing is the sign on the corner, do you have a height requirement? It can't be higher than, you know, is this gonna look like a nice little town?
We do, and I, um, no, they, we do have sign requirements, I don't think they're asking for signs just yet.
That's correct.
Only because I, I, I'm not sure, they're not sure which way they're gonna go, so that will be happening, they'll have to come before us with another, another application for signs, explaining what the size is, where it's gonna go, whether it's gonna be lit, whether it's not gonna be lit, the setbacks, so that tonight is not on the table, but it will be in the future. Let me just, we'll finish with her and then I'll get to you. I think so too. And not to interrupt you, as far as the hours, we don't have any zoning bylaws that regulate the hours, unfortunately. So if they wanna go twenty-four hours, there's nothing that we can do about it.
So it's just, it's because that particular gas station wants to go twenty-four? Because I don't believe any of the other gas stations in town are twenty-four seven.
They don't, I believe that's their choice.
So, you know, so it's their choice, so how, wouldn't it be nice if they were, I know...
Right, you know, we're bound by the, by the rules and regulations in our zoning book, unfortunately, and I would love to tell you that we can make things up as we go and fortunately we can't, although people think we do. We do have a book that we do have to follow, so.
I guess that's it.
All right, hold on, let me...
Bill Moran, one big Shaker Road, I'm the husband. When you started, you started off at the, the meeting with, with the residents in mind and I don't think there's anybody here that, if they lived where Glenn lives or myself or anybody else, you wouldn't want anything less or more of, without depreciating your home.
Yeah, yeah.
When I heard, I mean, everything that we wrote down, well, maybe, maybe the hours won't be, maybe, 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 and it's like, no, 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 no. Twenty-four seven, middle of the night, the guy can go over and get a beer. And now, and now you gotta...
Well, no, you can't, yeah.
You can't get a beer.
Yeah, liquor's, I think liquor has to be stopped at eleven, or, there are some timeframes for that, yes.
There's restrictions on that and on Sundays.
Restrictions.
Yeah, there are restrictions, I don't know exactly what they are, but I believe there are some restrictions. I thought it was the, okay, 'cause I know Countryside has a similar situation.
I mean, like I say, I'm just concerned, it's, you know, it's, I'm trying to look at this in a, in a positive way, I mean, I mean, people have a right to build and it's their land, they can do what they want, but it's, you also have a, it's like, really? You gotta put up a...
I, I understand, we're trying to balance everything, it's, it's not easy sometimes, believe me. You know, I, I don't know how to say it better than that, other than we're trying to find balance and make, and make everybody happy. Unfortunately, we don't always do, but we do try, so. Yes, sir, I know you've been waiting patiently.
Glenn Fish, I also live at two fifty-nine Chestnut.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of suggestions even. One of the things that we've mentioned is you said that the basement level of this new building is gonna probably have natural drainage as far as water table, meaning the basement will be at ground level, floor of the basement. So the first floor of the gas station building will be approximately eight feet above that floor level, which will require grading to bring the property up to that level as far as parking lot levels. And that's still gonna be at least a foot and a half or more below Shaker Road, because you said there would be a drop-off to the pumps a little bit. Right now, there's quite a drop-off.
Right.
I'm just wondering, where does that eight-foot level bring you, also in regard to the current Shaker, Chestnut Street on the other side and Shaker Road on this side, but Chestnut Street, you're gonna be going downhill to go out of the station? Because there's not eight feet less there now, I don't think.
Can you address that?
I'll run it further. Well, yeah, yes, the driveway off of Chestnut will come up about, from, from the road, it'll rise about two feet into the main part of the station.
This will be a, a rise here about two feet?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause that wasn't pointed out for sure and we're gonna think too about your drainage, 'cause I know that there's water table problems here.
Yeah, and that's where...
So it'll be coming uphill here, so you won't have any water shedding burn there. You were just mentioning about a water shedding burn here.
Right, the, the roundtable discussion, there was concern that water might come down here and getting inside, so this has just a one-inch, one and a half inch, well, not even, just, just a lip curve.
Speed belt.
No, like you might have in the driveway, it's just a one and a half inch lip curve. And then we adjusted the grading here, did some really, you know, fine level grading to make sure that all this gets captured before it gets out at the Chestnut.
Right, so the floor level of this actual building and parking lot area, is that uphill or downhill from the rail trail surface?
It's uphill.
It's still uphill to the rail trail?
No, no, from here, it goes up, yeah, so we, you know, right now, it's, it's very steep and so we're, we're lifting this up so that we can have a driveway here that's not too steep and this driveway's not too steep, we're just trying to, because we have to meet these two roads.
What is grade level of the first floor of this building as far as grade level of the rail trail, how do they compare?
Grade level is...
Is the rail trail gonna come up to this or this gonna come up?
No, we're not touching, we don't have to grade over the property line, the green is the property line. So we're gonna put this here in this slope from the back of the building down.
It's gonna slope down to the grade, down to the rail trail.
To the property line, right.
And down to the rail trail, the rail trail surface.
Well, not, well, rail trails, back here, the property line's here. So there's this buffer between us and the rail trail.
Okay, but you are, you'll have a small downgrade and then like a dip in there, so to speak.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're not changing, there's a natural drainage way through here, which we're not gonna touch, so any, any lifting we do here, we need to connect back to the existing grade at the property line.
Okay. My suggestion, two suggestions are, one is, instead of having your pumps straight across like you're drawing them here, a lot of stations found that if they angle them about fifteen degrees, people coming through either way, especially with either super cab trucks where we're pulling their bow trailer, can't make a sharp right turning, parallel into, parallel into a pump very well, but if you turn those pumps a little bit, they kind of flow in either way, trailer and all, and flow out through a lot easier.
Yeah, this is, well, one, I think a lot of places where they do that, they don't have the room, but the other thing here is, these are widely spaced pumps, just to make that kind of maneuvering a lot easier. We have probably almost ten feet more between these pumps so that even, even a larger vehicle can make that swing.
Okay, well, I didn't know, maybe they could line up better if you also just angled them, you know, ten or fifteen degrees diagonally, so that when they pull in, they're kind of close to them, they don't have to be so far away.
Well, like, this is a, you know, a good-sized site, so I, really, we, we've done those, we've done plenty of those angled dispensers and we only do it when we don't have the room to do it this way.
They work, they work good.
The other issue is a lot of things...
Exactly. The other issue which you have when you angle your dispensers is the side, in this case, that will be facing to the Shaker Road side, would now become a blind spot for the cashiers, so they can't see what's going on on that side of the dispenser. And, and trust me, having been as, as long enough, people do some funny things with the gas machine, trying to deal with their cars these days, we need to have...
It's tougher to get a trailer and you hate to make right angle turns and still try and get over, close to your gas pump.
Sure, sure. Part of the design here, we're, we're looking to have our cashiers facing right outside these plate glass windows so they can see for safety reasons at the pumps exactly what's going on out there. And part of that function is keeping those dispensers lined up to my ass.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to mention is that the subject did, already came up about, when I come down through here and I have to make a left to go up Chestnut Street and there's no turn light specifically for me, so we just sit there until, like you said, sometime two and three lights. But in the meantime, the cars coming behind me don't usually think what they're doing and they pull up against my bumper, then realize they suddenly wanna go around me to continue south, so they're trying to squeeze by me at the end. And they're always making this a two-lane highway anyways in the end. Since this is about thirty feet wide here by the looks of it, wouldn't maybe five feet off of here widen the road just about five feet, give them quite a safety margin when they're going around me, because instead of scraping my mirrors off, they could have a little more buffer and...
Well, that is a great idea, we can't ask that from them, that would have to be a town matter.
But, you know, while we're, while we're bullows and some dirt around here, it sure would help.
Well, I, I get, I'm not disagreeing with you. And, and we've talked, that was one of the things we could talk about today. And, you know, as, as the applicants, we, we can only ask so much of them, we can't ask them to start redoing our intersections. As municipalities, we find out it's going to be a problem, then we have to address it.
Well, both the traffic study will kind of bring that up and I know the, the semis, when they come, the same thing coming up Shaker Road and wanna go this way, they have to miss this by four or five inches with their front wheels in order for their trail wheel not to take the guy's bumper off sitting out here. If they're good, they make it, but sometimes I see the car backing up and backing up and letting the, you know, the new drivers go, get around the corner, 'cause they don't make it, or even the snowbank got out a little too far and they just have no... too far and they just have no place to go. So it's, it's very tight for them too to turn. And those things are, as well as these aren't, you know, it isn't already done and finished, well, it's cheaper to do it now if, if the subject be brought up and.
Unfortunately, it's not that simple, but.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Is there anybody else?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mary Oldfish, are there going to be outside receptacles per trash?
Yes.
Yes, there are.
Yes.
And more than one? Not just at the pumps, but I mean, over at the convenience store?
Suspect to be the convenience store and at the patio area.
Alright, so numerically, four, five, six, two?
I'm looking at the plan right now. I can easily see myself placing 10.
Okay.
Cause we get a lot of trash of people, when they're walking, they, you know, they bought something somewhere and they're eating it, and then they throw the wrappers down. If it's a soda bottle, they toss it.
Yep.
Even cars driving by. And with this kind of a business there, I know we're gonna get a lot more trash to pick up. Also, people turning around in our driveway. I'm not, I don't really worry too much about people turning around in the end. It's the people that insist on driving in the driveway up to the garage.
Okay.
They make turns right around me while I'm in the middle of my driveway going away.
Mr. Adams, did you have a comment? I saw your hand up numerous times.
Bob Adams, vetting driving. The driveway going out of the complex.
Which one, sir?
Kinda concerns me in a Chestnut Street. Why isn't the driveway moved down and made wider towards the bike path?
Because.
When you come out, you got a stop sign there, take a left turn to go up Chestnut Street Hill, or to cross the bike path.
The general consensus was, for this engineer, our engineer, basically everybody involved, was the farther away that driveway was from the bike path, the safer it would be for everybody on the bike path. Well, I'm just, I'm just telling you what.
I've worked here 45 years. You need to, like the gentleman said, the engineer, when they come out of the gas station with their coffee cup in their hand, and they're going to work, they step on the gas and they don't think about the bike path. So a stop sign needs to be made at the bike's path and the driveway coming out, not to give them that initial start to get going. And I think it's something that the planning board should really look at. I don't care how wide the driveway is, as long as they can go out and take a left-hand turn, and take a right-hand turn to go to Long Meadow.
You guys be adverse to a stall?
The upper driveway could be just coming into the complex.
One way, one way and one way out.
But that's something you really gotta look at, because I do agree with the engineer, moving it back is gonna give them a little more concern there's a bike path there. And as you all well-known, on the weekends, the bike path is heavily used, and we need to stop them. We need to stop them coming out of that gas station, right at the bike path. The stop sign there, if they wanna go left or right to Long Meadow, but they stop, and then they proceed. And that's something this planning board should look at. It is a safety issue, and I'm surprised the police department didn't do anything about it.
Alright, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a comment. Having been in this business for a while, the police department is the only department that can determine whether or not a stop sign is, is appropriate. And they have certain guidelines in the state that they have to adhere to. They can't just put a stop sign in place they feel like it. So it's really up to the police department to determine where stop signs are appropriate, and they have to be approved by the state DOT to, that they meet the proper criteria.
Okay.
You just can't arbitrarily do that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, a stop sign on their property can't be approved by the Board of Select.
On their property, yeah.
We have, it's proposed.
And that's where it needs to be, on their property, to stop them before they get to the bike path.
Alright, Mr. Adams, that has been proposed by this gentleman, stop sign on their property.
Right. And the driveway should be closer to the bike path, not to give the people the incentive to step on the gas and go with their coffee in their hand, or putting their credit card back in their pocket.
Okay.
I mean, something that you people should really be looking at, and you do have the authority to kinda work with that a little bit.
Well, we've had several roundtable meetings on the general consensus is, is where it is, taking all those concerns into, you know.
Okay. Thank you for.
Into effect. Thank you. Steve, you want to add something?
No, I say we have a stop sign on these drive.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to add anything? She had her hand up first. Yes, ma'am.
Just in closing, I would just hope that.
Name and address, again, I'm sorry.
Athene Seleski, 10 Green Willow Drive, Long Meadow. Having worked with this planning board in the past, I know that you take your due diligence very seriously, and also have the quality of your residents and those surrounding communities at, at heart's best. And I would just recommend that those that are proposing of the plan, try to maintain the good neighbor philosophy. This is a very exciting project. I'm not sure whether I'm in board or against it, but I'm here just as a concerned citizen in an open forum. That, again, let's keep in mind those people that are surrounding them, that are media of butters, and again, how this in, in fact, will both positively affect the quality of life in Long Meadow and, uh, East Long Meadow and the surrounding communities, as well as not, and the compromises that have to be reached accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else took their hand up?
Okay, hi, Glenn Fish. Another concern, I was the, I know you have under, lighting under the hoods of the gas pumps, and that's not a problem. That'll be deflected to ground, but there're bound to be a few parking lot lights. Well, what happened across the street already, in the evening establishment, that he has parking lot lights, and they did aim them down to try to get it off my property, cause if they're aimed wrong, well, they light up the whole inside of my house. But then recently, I guess there was a robbery there, so they leave them on day and night 24/7 now. So I'm always lit up, but my Christmas cactus is blooming again already. Throw them in the auto wash there so bad. I'm wondering if we could at least have a suggestion that they use parking lot lights that have a, they're a large hood, but they're horizontal and they face straight down, because they don't have any distance lighting they need to light up. They can light their main light, but there are, instead of having these types that you can get game or less up and down, well, they light too much of an area. But there's a, a type that's just flat, a surface light, but they do spread out just straight under themselves. Now it'd be nice to have that type of lighting.
A lot of the proposed lighting in this is LED lighting, and there's a lot more control over LED lighting than what's in that parking lot right now. That's old-school lighting. This is new-school lighting. Lot more control. If you see the lighting plan, you can see where it's, it's got specific areas where it's aimed.
And that is one of the things at the roundtable discussions, that is in fact brought up, because it has become a bigger issue.
There's been a lot of dialogue in there.
This new LED lighting is a lot more controlled. A lot more controlled.
Row zeros around the end.
Yeah, those concerns have definitely been addressed previously, but that is a very good comment.
Yeah, and, and actually, one other thing, the way the lights used to be, you had to put a big, like a piece of metal, like you're saying, like a box. But now the LEDs, they're small and they're in an array up in the light. So all you need to do is.
Just focus them.
Right in the light, you can put a baffle in, without having to, you know, make some big piece of metal, you can do it within the fixture, and it can baffle the light in any direction you want. It's, it's really, yeah, it's a big improvement. It's a huge improvement.
Alright, is there anybody else before we close the public hearing? Alright, seeing none, do I have a motion? Or can I get a motion before the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Can I have a motion to approve project as presented, pending further, pending further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, having not seen the updated traffic plan and all, I would be more up to make a motion to continue this to our next meeting. We had a roundtable yesterday. The traffic study was redone overnight, but in all honesty, other than what you've said tonight, I haven't had a chance to review it. I know Bob Parent hasn't had a chance to review it, and I, I would be not able to go forwards without sitting down for a couple hours at least with it.
Alright.
Well, I think we can still entertain a motion and have further discussion and not take a vote until we, we have the information we need. I, I mean, I have a couple of open questions yet for the applicants.
As do I.
The first one would be, do we have a definitive set of plans tonight? Because I saw you just up there sketching on a plan to show where the canopy was gonna be.
That canopy, you can't see it here, but it's on the, these plans. That's the rendering is not the definitive plan.
Are these, this set of plans is a definitive plan that you have here?
The only thing it does not reflect is the one additional parking space.
Or basement.
It has the basement.
It has the basement calculation. The nine, the plans were distributed yesterday and filed that here.
Yeah.
At the roundtable, Robin suggested one more parking space. We haven't added that in. But other than that, this is a definitive set.
Okay.
But it's on file.
Clarify that, cause we, I've seen several sets so far, and I'm not, I wanna make sure. We, we finally have something.
A definitive set, yes.
As, as close as it can be. The other, just my clarification, you're showing two underground tanks. Are those like segmented, so that you can get your different grades in there?
Yeah, there're two, they're double wall.
Right.
I assume you'll be double wall fiberglass. And, yeah, one of them will be a compartment tank, split with super and diesel, and one will be all regular.
Okay. Cause when you mentioned diesel, I'm suddenly hearing three grades.
Yeah, if one of the tanks gets split, the regular tank's the highest, you know, all by itself.
That's where most of the gas.
Right, and then you split the diesel and the super.
Okay, okay. Again, just clarifying that the plan that we have, which shows two tanks is, is the accurate plan, that's all. Okay.
I missed something. Did you get a motion to?
I'm not, I'm gonna go through myself.
Cause George suggested we get a motion and they had to hold off.
Attorney's right on top of that.
Further discussion.
Yeah.
So.
How do you wanna handle this, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I would, I guess at this point, I'd probably entertain a motion to continue, cause I have some concerns too.
Well, the, the hearing is closed.
The public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is closed, right.
Right, talking about.
Continue the.
The final motion.
The, the final motion.
Correct.
Thank you.
Alright.
I'll, I'll make a motion to continue the discussion.
Okay. I don't know that we can do that.
We can't do that.
You didn't close the public hearing. You closed the public's portion of the hearing.
No, we closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing.
That's why I was asking.
That's how it works.
Yeah, that's.
We closed discussion.
Right, the public.
We closed the public hearing, okay.
The public's discussion.
Right. The public hearing is closed. The hearing is closed.
I know, she's different.
We now, we now move into taking action, okay, which is separate from the public hearing.
Did, did they do a motion before the public hearing?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
I thought it was for the public.
I think that's, maybe that's, she doesn't have any of her minutes. I'm just trying to help.
I opened it publicly, closed it public. Now we're back before the board, entertaining a motion and further discussion.
Right, so you didn't.
Closing the public.
No, 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 right, no, no, that's still open. We're still, we're still discussing.
Robin, the hearing, the hearing is closed. We are no longer hearing the public.
Public.
The hearing is closed.
The public, alright, yeah.
Our actions are still to come. The actions are not part of the public hearing.
Right.
They're part of the public meeting.
Deliberation.
Right.
That follows the public hearing, okay?
Yep, just need to clarify.
You were gonna make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to continue our discussions until the, it'll be the 25th, 25th. At what time? Yeah.
That's gonna.
7:15? How big is Spalletto's gonna be?
Not big. The one that is, is the nine zoning bylaws before it.
Why don't we get these guys up before that? Cause I think all the answers will be.
If you wanna start your meeting at.
Start at 5:30, if we have to.
Yeah, sure.
Cause you have three special appointments.
Start, start the meeting at 5:30, and we'll put them, these guys on at 5:30.
We'll be here when you tell us.
Um, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, I'm not ready to vote on it yet, because I wanna address some of my own concerns based on my meeting with the superintendent. I love the plan. I think it's great. I think it'll be an asset to the town. However, I've got some genuine concerns for safety, traffic. And speaking with the DPW today, I respectfully disagree with your C and D and your, and your 9:45 and your 8:53. So I would like, again, to sit down with our DPW director, cause he had some great ideas. I don't think we have all the information we need tonight.
Do you have a copy of the report yourself?
I do have a copy. I did go over it tonight. I got the report. I believe that was generated.
Want me to do the other one, the 53 one?
Yes, we, we'll give you an update.
I have an update.
Okay, I read what was given to me today.
Yeah, I have an update for you.
Because, because Bob asked him to do things since the roundtable.
Okay.
And I think those are helpful.
Well, I understood a lot of it. I'm not, I didn't understand all of it, but.
No, he's got it right here, but I'll get an email to you tomorrow. I mean, he brought nine copies, so.
Well, um, Bob, I mean, yeah, Bob, Rick, Doug. Me, Michael, yeah.
Here's 12.
Alright.
Just, I'll do it anyway, just for your records.
Alright, at the very least, I'd like to do another roundtable with all the parties involved. So, you know, we can probably finalize all, everybody's ideas, get everybody on the same page. So I'd like to do that in the next two weeks before we get back here. So a lot of the questions that we have as a board, questions that were presented tonight from the public, we can try to answer as many of those as we can. Granted, it's not a perfect scenario, we know that, but we still have to make it work for everybody, including you.
Appreciate that. And we're, we're willing to participate.
Okay. I've got a motion made in seconds to continue the meeting two weeks from tonight at 5:30. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, James.
It's gonna be a nice project.
It's gonna be great. We just, you know, we gotta cross our teens and die our rocks.
Absolutely.
That's why we get the big bucks.
That'll give us another opportunity. I mean, these guys do this for a living. They're very strong on the safety issue on the right. So we'll have to sort it out.
And we will. No question about it. Hi.
Aye.
Five minutes. Done, we're gonna take five?
Cause I've seen, there's still, like it said, if you get your dealer's license, storage on-site, strictly office on-site.
It's just the office on-site, that's all.
Alright, I think this is one of the prerequisites you need from us to get, what you need from the federal.
Right, in order to apply, I have to get you guys on board.
Okay.
So it's really the first step.
George?
As long as there's no inventory on-site, I have no, no objection to it. Be, be aware that people do notice if there's inventory on-site, as other businesses in town have discovered. So I'm not saying anything about you personally, just, you know, making sure you're fully aware of that. Other than that, I have no issues. Is there a report from the police department in there? You said?
I don't, no, no, I just wanna make sure that they're.
We've spoken with police.
Time?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Tom?
Legal business?
Okay, Rafi, all set?
Yes, I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, can I have a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Let me get this right. In-site sales, 11 Overwood Drive?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you for your patience.
Nice to see you again.
And you too.
You know, like, for a new place.
Yes, I do, I do. So you're not gonna forget me, all right?
Of course.
Good eye. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have requests for waiver of site plan for Fashionista Designs, 41 Allendale Drive.
How you doing? Good. Nice seeing you.
Request for waiver of site plan. Property owner is Wendy Ledainus, 41 Allendale Drive, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Fashion Tania Designs. Owner of business is Wendy Ledainus. Property owner is the same. Property address is the same. Property district is B. Proposed hours of operation, computer work, 10 hours a week. Number of employees, including owner, one. Data last parking plan is blank. Summary of business, I do craft fairs. Something varies. Servants, oh, scarves, reeves, candle warmers, and the application has been signed and dated February 26, 2014.
Sounds like another home office.
Yes, it does.
Ralph? I believe 41 Allendale already has either one or two waiver of site plans, so I would just like the board to make sure that she understands that even though this is an approved use, that the 20% square footage in the house covers all three businesses. Each one's not individual, so we're not looking at 60%. It's 20% total.
All right, so I think we should put that in the approval letter. Rob?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, George?
Fine with it.
Tom?
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. All right, so...
I would make a motion to approve the waiver of site plan review for Fashionista Designs, 41 Allendale Drive.
I'll second that.
With the language that we discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up is request for waiver of site plan review, Eastbrook Landscaping, 20 Linwood Road.
Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Andre Sample. Owner's address is 20 Linwood Drive, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed. Name of proposed business is Eastbrook Landscaping. Owner of business is Andre Sample. Business owner's address is P.O. Box 965, East Long Meadow. Property address is 20 Linwood Road, East Long Meadow. Property district is A. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Summary of business operation, landscaping, lawn care, owner stores, all equipment in Hamden, Mass. at family company, Families Company. Home use for office only, computer and phone, no clients, no commercial vehicles are stored at the home. The application has been signed and dated February 27, 2014.
Sounds like it's pretty self-explanatory, but I'll certainly ask for comments.
I can bounce for the parking.
Okay. Todd?
I have no comments.
Ralph, George?
Sounds like the home office.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we have a street taking, Fenway Lane.
I have a letter here dated to the planning board. Dear Planning Board, I hereby request that the planning board make a motion for the warrant article regarding street taking of Fenway Lane. Thank you, Charles Richard.
All right, so in essence, I think he's...rather than him presenting, he's asking us to present it? Has he met Frank's...
Frank hasn't done the inspection yet.
All right. Which I'm assuming he will do before the town meeting?
Yes.
All right. So he's basically just asking us to represent it, rather than himself, granting all the criteria that have been met before town meeting.
Why?
Why? Because he has the right, I guess. I don't think it's unusual to do that, as long as he's met all our criteria, he's met all the town's criteria.
I mean, my suggestion would be we can agree to do it based on the road being ready to be taken.
Right, which we will.
I don't want to present something or be brought up at town meeting as a petitioned article through the planning board if it's not ready to be taken.
It won't be. It would be pulled, it would be changed, it would be amended.
As long as we give language to him that he understands that, that Frank says, no, the road is not ready to be taken, that we're not gonna represent it.
Right, we can't represent something that's not accurate. Yep. I completely agree with that. I mean, I don't have a problem with us representing it, as long as it's been represented correctly, that it is in fact done to DPW standards and our standards.
Fair enough.
All right.
Can we wait until DPW takes a look at it?
We can...we have to, but we can, you know, for argument's sake, we can make the motion get approved tonight, and if Mr. Richards, you know, defaults on his end of it, then we will not represent it at town meeting. We've got to make sure that he meets all the criteria before we can present it to the town, i.e. being DPW inspections and sign-offs.
Yeah, this is basically just saying that the planning board will provide the motion at town meeting.
How...any idea roughly how far in advance of town meeting?
Usually about six weeks.
For conversation's sake.
We just defer this to that time, then, and let him know six weeks in advance whether we'll do it or not?
You can. I mean, you know, for argument's sake, the town meeting is in May. He wants to get it approved, or not get it approved. He wants it to be on the warrant article, but the road may not be done right now, because our small plants are not open, you may not be able to do any landscaping, so I think he's just...
As a petitioned article, he would have already had to have put it on.
He did.
So it's already on the warrant, and what he's just asking us is if we'll represent it, and my only suggestion would be, why don't we wait until...see if the road's been done before we tell him, yes, we'll do it. Tell him we have no problem with it, but...
I'm just uncomfortable not having heard DPW's take on it, given some of the history of Fenway Lane.
All right, I'm not disingling to agree with the presentation from the planning board, however, I don't want to wait till the last minute, because I know what happens at the last minute.
What's the difference?
If we wait till the last minute, I know sometimes we've had meetings before the town meeting. If we prove it tonight or prove it then, I don't really see the difference. I do...I do see everybody's concerns. If the road's not done, we're simply not going to present it. I mean, there's no...there's no gray area. If the road's not done, we will not present it, so...
But he would still have the option, I mean, being a petitioned article, by him...
I think that negates his option, unless he has all the signatures, which he doesn't.
No, he does.
He does for us to accept it or him to present it.
He has filed the request for a warrant article. He had the...
Oh, good door signature.
He has asked that the planning board do the motion at town meeting.
That's always asking for it.
Can he still do it? Yes. But he's...you...the planning board and DPW would stand up and say that it's not ready, and they vote against it. Anybody has a right to, but he doesn't know how to do a motion. He doesn't want to do a motion, and that's why I called Jim Shields and asked him, and he said it was perfectly fine if that's something the planning board wanted to do.
That's...that's fine. If you don't want to get up here, that's fine, but if it's not paved, it's not ready, I see. Wait till it's done. No, I don't even do anything now, nothing.
Okay. Do we need a motion on the motion?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Then I think that's the general consensus, we're gonna wait.
Yeah.
Do we get further along?
Yeah, why waste your time?
Yes, I agree.